Under into a roll call of council colleagues, Constable Wright.
Good evening.
Constable Nack.
Good evening.
Constable Principay.
Hello.
Constable Stevenson.
Good evening.
Constable Paquette. Constable Tang.
Good evening.
Constable Hamilton. Constable Rutherford. Constable Salvador.
Good evening.
Constable Cartmell.
Good evening.
Constable Rice. Constable Janz.
Good evening.
We have Corm. And I'm going to call up the second panel in favor. Angel Benedict, ADDJAD, Santa's Anonymous, in person, please. He'll be speaker number one. Panita McBrien, Edmonton Downtown Business Association, in person, speaker number two. Laura McClelland, McEwan University, in person, speaker number three. Tim Adams, Free Play for Kids, in person, speaker number four. Corey Wozniak, speaker number five, in person. Trevor Morton, Norquest College, in person. Travis Morton, oh, there you are. Kevin Bull, in person, please come down, speaker number seven, he'll be speaker number seven. Speaker number eight, Punit Manchandra, Council of India Society of Edmonton Remote. Punit, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Thank you. And Amanda Banister, joining remotely. Amanda Banister. Who, Sophia C. Jote, C. Jote? Sophia C. Jote. Oh, Jay Wulett, Edmonton Youth Basketball Association, Alberta Basketball, in person. Please come down, you'll be speaker number 11. Depends on if other speakers show up. Joel Lenius, to answer questions only, Oilers Entertainment Group. Joel Lenius. No. Okay. Steve Weber, BHEI Sports Management, in person. Steve. Is that you, Steve? Okay, okay. Crystal Kaufman, BHEI Sports Management. Thank you. Mike Stelter, Ben Stelter Foundation. Mike. No. One, two, three, four. Books on are not here. I'm going to see if I can have few backups for panel two. Yamana Gandur. Or, I know Tim, Tim Shipton is the only one on panel four in favor. Tim, you want to be part of this panel? Sure, okay, yep. Then we don't have to have a panel four. In favor, okay. To Tim Shipton, you'll be speaker. Find a seat anywhere there. Eight or nine, eight.
Mayor, so there was a request from an individual to move up from panel three to two because she couldn't make it tomorrow?
Panel three to see, that was Gail Bugochi?
She's, she's on her way, I just walked faster than her, that's all.
Okay, so we'll have her part of panel, panel two, okay? She's otherwise registered to be panel numbers 15. In favor on panel three, okay. We will try to keep at 15, right, so to be fair to everyone. Okay, all right. We will start with Angel Benedict. Each of you will have five minutes, as you know, the process, so please stay within five minutes. And then council members may have questions after we have concluded hearing from the panel, okay?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Angel Benedict and I'm here today on behalf of ADDJAD Santa's Anonymous, an Edmonton tradition that's been bringing joy to local children during the holidays. And this Christmas, it will be 70 years of servicing our city. I'm here to express our support for the CRL expansion and the down, the proposed downtown community event park in Edmonton's ICE district. And to recognize the incredible longstanding partnership we have with the Oilers Entertainment Group and the Edmonton Oilers Community Foundation. But first, why are we talking about a Christmas charity in June? Santa's Anonymous serves approximately 20,000 kids every single year. That represents nearly 10,000 Edmonton families. We rely on 2,700 volunteers each season to execute this program and thousands more for their generosity. It's a true community effort powered by Edmontonians from all walks of life. We simply cannot do this without the entire city rallying around us, including our corporate and community partners. Rogers Place and broader ICE district have truly been game changers for our city. Not just economically, but socially and culturally. These spaces have created exciting new possibilities for community engagement. And crucially, they've provided a platform for charitable organizations like Santa's to connect more deeply with Edmontonians. The proposed downtown community event park represents a space for inclusion, creativity, and connection. This new venue can address a critical and growing need in the charitable sector. Access to large affordable event space. As charities, we rely on community events to engage our supporters, celebrate our volunteers and milestones, fundraise, and reach the people we serve. Yet, finding suitable venues that are both accessible and financially feasible is an ongoing challenge. This park would help fill that gap, unlocking new opportunities for outreach, collaboration, and impact. We know first, firsthand how powerful that kind of support can be. Over the last 25 years, the Edmonton Oilers Community Foundation has been a key supporter of Santa's Anonymous, helping us meet the growing demand for help. Their support allows us to fill essential gaps, purchasing gift supplies, toys for age groups where donations often fall short, as well as funding for Santa's Depot, the heart and home of our operations, where Christmas magic begins for so many Edmonton children. The Oilers Entertainment Group and the Edmonton Communities Foundation's generosity, your city's generosity, help ensure that no child is forgotten during the holiday season. And beyond the dollars, they provided visibility, advocacy, and community connections that money simply cannot buy. We believe the new downtown community event park will carry forward that same spirit, amplifying charitable work, uniting Edmontonians, and building a stronger, more vibrant community. On behalf of our volunteers, our staff, and the thousands of families we serve each year, thank you for considering this important investment in the future of our city. We are proud to stand and support. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we'll go to Panita McBrien.
Thank you so much, council. I submitted one image, thank you so much. So you've heard from me on this issue before, specifically about the event.
I'm sorry, just hold on, who is Patricia? Okay, good. Sorry, we'll start your time again. There was some disturbance on the other side. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. So you've heard from me on this issue before. And we've talked a lot about the importance of these investments in downtown and how they support the overall city's economy and the tax base. So I wanted to try and contribute something new here. So I rewrote all of my remarks today, but you're used to me winging it, so here we go. When Admin pulled up this map today, I thought it was important to zero in on a few things. So what I've circled in hot pink there is every redevelopment downtown that is either city-owned or property tax exempt. So when we're looking at the CRL to date and where the actual tax uplift has been and material increases in property values that have bolstered the tax base and are actually paying off all of the CRL investments, it is only those green squares that are left that are not circled in pink. And I also noticed a couple of things were missing, the shift. Qualico's development there, just east of the event park, proposed event park. I added as a lime green square. And I also wanted to point out some of the developments really significant, tens of millions of dollars investments that are just outside of the CRL area. So I added that lime green square just, just below the CRL area there. That's HSBC Place. That is technically, it's not in the CRL, which means all of that uplift goes into general revenue. You have, all Edmontonians have benefited from that investment. They are paying probably more tax than anyone in the city. That's a very expensive building and it's very full. And so there are benefits beyond just the CRL area for these investments. And the, and the main point I wanted to make here, because I think, you know, I know, and I know you all know, the really dire fiscal situation that you are in, that the city of Edmonton is in. And as much as every small business investment of $200,000 or $500,000 at a time is so valuable and will continue to support those businesses, and I know our, our colleagues in Admin will continue to do that, you need billions of dollars of private sector investment to stabilize your revenue and your fiscal situation. And you have two ways of doing that. You've got your industrial base, which I know there's some work being done, and you have downtown. And so without billions of dollars, you're not going to get out of the situation that we're in. And so when we look at this map and you ask yourselves, okay, out of the CRL, what's worked? I know Constable Stevenson has expressed concerns in the past about, you know, can we even actually pay off all the, the CRL investments, even if we do the extension and, and do all these projects? The only project that generates real tax uplift that actually pays for the whole thing is the public-private partnership, and in this case, that is Rogers Place. I would say the same thing about this new project list. And I know many of you feel like we need to go back to the province, we need to renegotiate this deal, perhaps look at other projects. I, I completely understand the concerns that are leading you to that conclusion. However, when I look at that project list with the public-private partnerships pulled out, that includes OEG's event park, the Village at ICE district. It also includes the brownfield remediation and the attainable housing fund, although those are going to be smaller impact and longer term and less certain. If I'm the province looking at that project list without these public-private partnerships, my first question is, what is going to pay for all of this? Because you look at the Quarters CRL, you look at the Belvidere CRL, where the city has funded really great public realm things, you know, public, all public use, all public assets, no private money, and where has that gotten us? And how are we going to pay for those things? If you had even one public-private partnership in the Quarters CRL, I think it would be a very different story. And so I have very, you know, progressive urbanites that love cities that are always going to different, like me, that are always going to different cities all over North America and coming back and saying to me, oh my God, the trees and the walkability and the sidewalks and the amenities and all these things that the city has. Why can't Edmonton have those things? Every time I go and do a little bit of digging into like that city and the things that they're raving about, every single time, the answer is public-private partnerships and an influx of billions of dollars of private investment. I hate that that's what city building is in the modern age, but it is. And you and I don't have the power to change that. And in terms of negotiating with the province, you also don't have any power there. There are no votes, there's no seats for us to offer, offer up to the UCP government. You don't have anything to offer them when you go back to the negotiating table. So as much as I understand the impulse and the instinct, I think you've got to play the hand you've been dealt or you're walking away from the table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for joining us and also everyone waiting all day. Appreciate that. Next speaker is going to be Laura McClelland from McEwan University.
Good evening. I wouldn't be from a university if I didn't have a PowerPoint that I was going to share this evening. My name is Laura McClelland, I'm Vice President, University Relations with McEwan University. McEwan is very grateful for the opportunity to present his worship and members of the city council today. We appreciate your interest in hearing from so many constituents and stakeholders. I'll just pause and they can play the, the slide there, the black slide, if you push play on it. There should be a button. Maybe not. We'll stay, we'll stay on the prior one. Um, I'm here to express support for extending the C R L. We are constituent in Edmonton's downtown. Thirty-four percent of our students rent with many in the downtown, and we have faculty and staff living in the downtown. We embrace our location in Ward Ode Min, and we are a valued partner to community, organizations, businesses, and services. We collaborate on everything from academic initiatives to impactful research projects, work integrated learning with businesses, innovation, and entrepreneurship and startups. We are intrinsically tied to downtown success as a thriving, vibrant center, and we want to do our part to enhance our community. Next slide. Edmonton has all the ingredients for our exceptional city and great downtown. The education district, we are the only city in Canada with the UNESCO Learning City designation. You have a fully embedded university and colleges in the downtown core. This represents incredible energy and vitality with youth. There are only two cities in Canada that have a fully embedded public university in the downtown, and others are trying to draw university students to their core. The city of Calgary just provided nine million dollars from their downtown post-secondary institution incentive program to move one school from University of Calgary's School of Architecture into the downtown. You have a fully embedded university in the downtown. Edmonton's arts and entertainment districts bring energy and foot traffic, and McEwen students are deeply part of that mix. The unique mixed-use development, housing, and public spaces and placemaking create communities that become sticky and sticky for our students. We are integrated into the social, economic, and cultural fabric of the downtown. Next slide. McEwen is one of the largest, I guess, tap it, sorry, there must be some words that will come. Um, McEwen is one of the largest anchor tenants downtown, drawing twenty thousand people into the core each day. This is one quarter of the downtown population. We are neighbors to twelve hundred businesses and over thirteen thousand residents. In the past two years, we've signed memoranda of understandings with many organizations, including the Edmonton Elks, Edmonton International Airport, Alberta Motor Association, the Oilers Entertainment Group, and we are working on M O Us with Edmonton Public Library, the Windspear, and Boyle Street Community Services. These agreements provide an opportunity for our students to study, work, and learn from these organizations, and they in part share their experiences, best practices, and offer opportunities to students. Earlier this month, we announced an accessible student housing pilot project, which provides students with a discount on housing in the downtown. Accessible and affordable housing is a priority for students, as you heard earlier this morning. McEwen is growing, and by twenty thirty, there will be thirty thousand students. This growth represents ten thousand new students. With thirty-four percent of our students renting, it means thirty-four hundred net new spaces for rent, a significant volume of which will be in the downtown. Our new school of business building, over a two hundred million dollar project, will bring more foot traffic and presence to the core. Our alumni also stay in Edmonton. With over ninety thousand alumni and over eighty percent staying in the city, the contribution back to the city and the economy are strong. Extending the C R L will benefit and is critical to McEwen with talent attraction, building safer and livelier spaces, and encouraging economic growth through private investment. This increasing influx of students and faculty acts as a catalyst for revitalization, energizing local businesses, supporting existing businesses, new retail and hospitality ventures, and encouraging investments in public infrastructure and cultural programming. The C R L is more than a financial tool. It is a catalyst for creating a dynamic, inclusive, and sustainable downtown that benefits students, faculty, staff, residents, businesses, and our visitors. The C R L helps deliver on McEwen's and the city's shared priorities, which include predictable planned infrastructure funding, support for the arts and culture sector, and creating a safe and inclusive and welcoming core. Next slide. Sorry, next one. Support to the C R L is important, and we are concerned that a lack of strategic investment in the downtown will slide the downtown backwards. The C R L supports safety with its staffing and infrastructure, creates accessible and walkable green spaces-
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Uh, uh, next speaker is Tim Adams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tim Adams. I am the founder and executive director of Free Play for Kids, an Edmonton-born charity that serves forty-five hundred children and families each year with safe, inclusive, and welcoming places to play, belong, and grow. Every day, we run programming in up to fifty locations across the city, and we use sport and play as a tool to mentor kids in need, to teach critical lessons in mental health, emotional regulation, and social development. But at its core, our mission is actually quite simple. We help kids and families feel like they belong. And I'm here today to speak to how the C R L and the proposed extension plays a critical role in building that sense of belonging. It starts with our Welcome to Play program, created in direct partnership with Edmonton's largest settlement agencies to support newly arrived refugees. These are families who, in their very first days in Canada, are navigating a new country, a new language, and a new city. While they wait for permanent housing and school placement, often a month or two, we send a bus and two staff each day to bring children to play. We take them to the rec centers, playgrounds, and then walks through the river valley. And then we go further, using play as a tour guide to the city. We visit grocery stores, fire halls, and the science center. But recently, we've made a major push to downtown as well. Weekly trips to the Stanley Milner Library, rides on the funicular, visits to the Royal Alberta Museum, tours of Rogers Place, and introductions to the strange, fast-paced game we call hockey, which is brand new to a lot of folks who are coming to this country for the first time. I share these moments because they are more than field trips. They are the beginning of connection, the beginning of belonging. Downtown becomes more than a distant place. It becomes familiar. It becomes theirs. Once families find permanent housing, we transition them into our Free to Play program, daily free after-school care offered in twenty-four of Edmonton's highest needs elementary schools. This helps seven hundred families save money and earn more money because their kids are safe from three to five P M., the most critical hours of the day. With the support from a downtown vibrancy grant and E O C F this year, we've been able to take free play kids beyond their neighborhoods to experience downtown in ways many of them have never. We ran massive ball hockey tournaments in Moss Pit, Fan Park, Ford Hall, and Churchill Square. And what happens is always the same. A kid pauses their game, looks around, and asks, what's that place? Pointing to the A G A. Can I go in there? Pointing to the Royal Alberta Museum. Is that for me? Pointing to Rogers Place. And we get to answer every single time, yes, that is for you. The city is for you. Truth is, many of the kids we serve have never been downtown. Some have never crossed the river, but the first time they do, something shifts. They see themselves in this city. They begin to feel they belong here. That is why the C R L matters. The completion of the Windspear, safer transit, a new downtown event park with year-round programming space, and one-third of its time for community use. These aren't just facilities. They are launchpads for inclusion, gathering spaces that help people feel seen, safe, and inspired to explore more of downtown. Continued investment through the C R L is an investment in connection, in opportunity, in the belief that every kid, no matter their background or income, deserves to feel like Edmonton belongs to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Uh, next we will go to Corey Wasnick. Please go ahead.
I started my career in commercial real estate thirty years ago. Sandbox that I specialize in is downtown. I began my career when Edmonton was referred to as Deadminton for one simple reason, the lack of vibrancy downtown. Over the decades, there have been periods of great success, which followed periods of immense challenge. In the late nineties, downtown was at a low point. But then an incentive was rolled out to deliver new housing, and that fixed the office market and accelerated residential growth. Downtowns across North America are asking themselves, how do they become worthy of investment again? How do they become safer? How do they become neighborhoods that people want to go to, not need to go to because their employer says so? This is a common issue across municipalities, and the ones that are having success are the ones that embrace the fact they are no longer central business districts. They need to become central social districts. The cities that are improving their downtowns for the betterment of the entire region are executing a social strategy, which then opens the door to a corporate strategy. Downtown needs to lean into hospitality, into the arts, into leisure, into diverse housing, into being a place of belonging. The city of Edmonton and the province can unlock that potential by taking a partnership approach with the private sector. This has worked for us in the past and is working in other cities. Growth in the corporate sector won't drive growth for the rest of downtown. But if we improve our social experiences first, that will pull the rest of downtown up with it. A safer and more vibrant downtown starts with a strategy focused on recreation and hospitality. That's the connective tissue that binds residential, tourism, office tenants, and students. That will make downtown more investable again, bring new capital to the region. It'll support downtown as a place for all Edmontonians. I can't help but think what our downtown would have been like all these years without the C R L or Ice District. If it was still a bus depot and a giant gravel parking lot. It's amazing what a playoff run can do for Edmonton's economy. As we've heard, two hundred sixty-six million, eighty thousand hotel stays, thirty thousand people visiting our downtown core three nights a week for two months. But we need an economic plan that doesn't depend on the Oilers winning. And that's what a event park will help deliver. The healthiest downtowns anywhere on the planet are led by vibrant communities that provide a variety of recreation experiences, diverse services, diverse housing, activated public realm spaces. What follows are more employers, more residents, and more customers to support our small business owners that take a risk by filling our oceans of vacant space. What your administration is proposing will responsibly direct funds that leverage other sources of capital to accelerate becoming the downtown we all agree that it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for joining us. Uh, next we will go to Trevor Morton.
Evening, everybody. My name is Trevor Morton. I'm the Director of Campus Services in Norquest College. I've just shortened my speaking notes. You'll be happy about that because Vice President McClelland down below has said a lot of my points already, so I won't bore you with that repeat. For over sixty-five years, Norquest College has served as a proud anchor institution in the heart of Edmonton's downtown core. Our deep commitment to the ongoing revitalization of vibrancy of the downtown reflects our belief in a strong, thriving city for our, for all. Much like McEwen, we are currently advancing our vision for the expansion of our campus with the Proposed Career Skill Center, a thirty thousand square meter plus transformative capital project currently under consideration by the Government of Alberta for funding. This new facility will not only add capacity to support growing learner demand, it will also help bring the city's vision for Capital Boulevard to life as a vibrant corridor of learning, innovation, and opportunity. This project is an important contribution to the concept of an education district. Every day, tens of thousands of students, faculty, and staff commute to the Edmonton's downtown campuses. Just imagine if we had the ability to provide affordable housing, better amenities, strong supporting infrastructure, we would see more of them live and stay downtown, boosting both their success and the city's downtown revitalization plans. Promising developments by Westridge Pacific Corporation, MacLab Development Group, currently underway along Capital Boulevard, are a small sample of the vibrant future that we can build together. The community revitalization levy represents a long-term strategic investment in Cap Edmonton's downtown, one that is vital to the future of our learners, our community, and the city's economic growth and vibrancy. Norquest College supports the proposed extension of the downtown community revitalization levy and the expanded project list, especially the planned investments in transit, infrastructure, and other important projects like the new event park and Waverhouse Park. These initiatives are paving the way for downtown Edmonton to become a dynamic hub of opportunity, activity, and innovation. And one more thing that I'll add, uh, just because I have like a bunch of time left, is since we published our campus master plan in twenty twenty-three, we've had developers and companies and organizations come to us to ask how they can help. And the biggest thing that we, uh, explain to people is we need the housing in the downtown core. If you guys can replace these gravel lots with housing opportunities aimed at students, so not like the big fancy condos that don't sell, um, the, the things that are in students' grasp, um, that will actually capitalize and put people in our downtown core twenty-four, seven. And we won't be so reliant on the business hours of eight to, eight till six and/or the event-based, uh, surges that bring people to downtown core. If we have people downtown twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, things will fall in place. It'll be a safer downtown. People will live downtown. They'll enjoy being downtown. We're on the way there. We just have to keep going. Thanks.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to Kevin Bull.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Kevin Bull, and I'm a resident of the E P Kokoni Piotsey Ward. I'm a relatively new Edmontonian, and I'd like to add my voice to the strong support of the amendment of the C R L plan, particularly the addition of these important new projects. Three years ago, my wife and I chose to move from Vancouver to Edmonton. I was already an Oilers fan, so that was fine. My entire life up to that point was, uh, based in Vancouver in the lower mainland. Retirement gave us geographic freedom. We didn't have to move, but we chose Edmonton, and now we've chosen to stay. A significant attraction for us was and is the arts community in Edmonton. It's really very good. The, I'm particularly impressed with the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra, the Windspear, and the Davis organ. I think Edmonton, Edmontonians should be very proud. I mean, I don't know if you know how good it is. It is really good. Windspear, as I've found out, is, is more than, you know, just a, a venue. It's also a community anchor, and it's a place where music, arts, and culture bring people together. The planned expansion, which is part of this amendment, and to me, an important part, will add accessible education spaces for, for youth and for adults. It'll provide some much-needed underground parking, particularly in the winter, as I have found, and expand programming to reach even more Edmontonians. From everything that I've seen about the Windspear Center, it has a track record of, of really good management. I mean, they deliver some outstanding programming, and they seem to keep costs under control. So I mean, it's, it is truly world-class. Fiscally, I'm actually quite conservative, and I think all levels of government spending need thorough scrutiny. I personally do not like government spending where and when it isn't absolutely needed. Truth be told, I tend to lean towards no on many of the extraordinary expenditures, but I've come to realize that there are worthy exceptions. My previous home, Vancouver, certainly lovely. They provide a potentially cautionary tale for Edmonton. For an area to be vibrant, it must have critical mass. Enough draw for enough people at enough times to be positive and a self-sustaining environment. This in turn brings, breeds further growth, additional desired services, entertainment, restaurants, and housing. If venues are too spread out, they can become isolated islands, and these may not reach this critical mass. There's just not enough reason for people to go, and, and these, these areas will suffer. Theater Row in Vancouver, or the Granville Entertainment, uh, area, district, uh, which is still where the Vancouver Symphony plays, may be a, a helpful case to consider. When I was much younger, uh, there were many venues and, and reasons to go. But as entertainment habits changed and the area did not, the reasons to go dropped and investments were not made. The result is, it is not a nice place to go. I'm not sure if Edmontonians know how bad a Canadian city can become. I mean, it's, it's just plain not good. It's dangerous. There's empty storefronts. There's crime. The costs, it does cost the city. Besides social costs, there's policing and a loss of tax base. So I think that Edmonton is fortunate. It can connect its key districts, the Ice District, Arts District, Quarters, and Chinatown, and make it a dynamic, single experience. I think Edmonton is really within striking distance, and I wouldn't be here, uh, if I didn't think so. I would say, don't put good money after bad. But I do, do please suggest that you consider going ahead with this. I've seen what, uh, isolated regions within the downtown can breed, and I don't think Edmonton really wants that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to, uh, Punit Manchandra, joining- Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to Poonit Manchandra, joining us remotely.
Hi, can you hear me properly?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. So my name is Poonit Manchandra, and I'm with the Council of Indian Societies of Edmonton as a past president. And it's precious. Thank you so much and the councillors for giving me the opportunity to come and speak on behalf of the council. And you've been part of our program, and you're a big supporter for us, and so have been some of your councillors who have been working hand in hand with us. Just to bring it to everybody, our society, our council consists of twenty-four societies of Indian origin, and their membership ranges from hundred to almost five thousand, six thousand. So collectively, we have a really large Indian base that we cater to. And council itself has a lot of events, but also so does most of our society. And we certainly look forward to having more and more opportunities for us to get into some of the events that we can host in various areas. And not trying to get into a bind, like Giga Town is one where it's limited in terms of the availability of what we want it. And we have to be really cautious on when we get into the booking side of it. Thus, the funding is becoming more and more expensive as we go along. We are certainly looking for better opportunities. And with this with this new arena that is being proposed, and what I've been understanding is that this program, this arena will be more community-focused. And we certainly would like to work with O E G to make sure that we get equal opportunity and we are able to provide services to the community. Our events basically can range anything between five hundred to thousand people. And our current facility where we have our own building can only take in like twelve and fifty. So we always consider for the space. We certainly are looking for some more opportunities where the size of what is being proposed will work really well for us. In terms of students, one of our mandates is also supporting our students, and one of the biggest challenges that they have is about the housing side of it. So having one-third of the twenty-five hundred proposed housing for the students is certainly something that we would like to support and make sure that this housing is available, especially when it comes to McEwan, Nate, that's where the vicinity is. That's really awesome, because that's where some of our biggest challenges are. In terms of getting more support, I think we are, our societies, certainly we appreciate it. Some of them have their own facility, but again, we are limited in terms of how many people we can host. So our Goodjabis Society has a Darba, which has like three to four thousand people. And that the open space toward the Kennedy certainly is something that would certainly be a really huge opportunity for us to leverage as well. So we would like to support this project. And my understanding this, this money that is going to be poured off by no additional expenses, what I'm looking for, but again, there is something that we have to put in a bit of our as a community or as the residents of Edmonton. I think that is something that I think we should be able to support as a whole. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to Jay Wolet.
Hi, my name is Jay Wolet. I am President of Edmonton Youth Basketball, Vice President of Alberta Basketball, and I'm also Head Coach at the King's University and a Sessional Professor. So to say I am involved in sport would be a little bit of an understatement. So I want to thank you, our esteemed Mayor and City Councillors, for your time and consideration. I'm a mere tradesperson turned coach and educator, so I'm not here to read statistics and crunch numbers for you. I'll leave that to those that are far smarter than me. I'm just here to do my part helping voice opportunities for our inner-city youth and their families, and why the C R L agreement and continued relationship with O E G is imperative. Over the past forty-five years, the E Y B has become one of the largest non-for-profit basketball organizations in Western Canada. We provide a safe, inclusive environment for kids with over sixty-eight hundred members playing basketball annually. This means over five hundred and sixty teams, sixty-six teams playing weekly. Basketball is a true melting pot of diverse participants, and we continue to grow by fifteen to twenty percent each year. I'm happy to say we've had a positive experience with the City Council in Edmonton and the O E G. After fundraising money for nearly twenty years and with the City of Edmonton funded incentives, such as property tax relief for nonprofit youth groups, building facilities, and with the donation dollars we receive from groups like O E G, we were able to open our own three-court facility just off Roper Road. That being said, we need more facilities to match our growth and demand. We still face logistical restraints such as lack of funding and zoning issues. Navigating some of these convoluted zoning bylaws has also left a few eager youth groups on the outs and many viable vacant plots, lands, and buildings empty. We've been limited to the outskirts of Edmonton, primarily industrial areas in South Edmonton, thus limiting accessibility to our inner-city members. Due to public transit restraints, transit isn't available during our peak hours. Many of these kids have parents who are unable to attend practices and games due to shift work, or they simply just don't own a vehicle. So despite the growing number of organizations doing what they can, such as Free Play that are here today, Sport Edmonton, Alberta Sport, and our P S O, we're still coming up short. So how does this relate to what we're talking about today? I've heard the opposition talk about how much money the Oilers group is making as a private enterprise. Nobody has spoken about the millions of dollars their foundations put back into the community annually to help all sorts of underprivileged families and organizations, not just sport. The O E G and the Event Park is offering free admission for youth for various sports, not just for hockey, and clearly not just for the playoff portion that we call Fan Park. We believe in the proposed extension of the C R L, specifically the impact it'll have on this proposed Event Park. And again, I say a Bent Park because it's not just a Fan Park. They're offering free access to various youth and various programs. So selfishly, this would alleviate accessibility issues for our inner-city groups and families in our membership that are currently unable to participate. So here's an analogy from a simple basketball coach. If you told me I had to pitch in some money to purchase a weekly Lotto ticket with my colleagues, because I'm a blue-collar guy, and that's what we used to do, hoping to hit lady luck. And the payout was pretty much guaranteed, as we've seen with the C R L initiatives and the millions of dollars in reported revenue coming into the downtown area. Who wouldn't buy a ticket, right? Continuing with the C R L and specifically with the O E G is no different than buying a ticket guaranteed to win. I mean, except for game sevens. Don't bet on those right now. I'm waiting to see that change for us. In closing, on behalf of the E Y B and all the other organizations that are struggling to maintain participation, specifically with our inner-city families, I implore this council to make the right decision. Let's finish what you guys started. You keep talking about legacy. You have an opportunity to do it, and sometimes I feel like we're just splitting hairs. I'm a common guy that works with hundreds of youth and hundreds of programs, and I reach as far. I'm from Toronto. I've come from a much bigger pond where I was part of the basketball scene there. And I just say, you know what, I really appreciate both sides of this argument, and I appreciate your time, and I really hope you guys do the right thing with this, because there's a lot of youth depending on it as well.
Thank you so much for joining us. I understand that Sophia C Jote is also have joined us, so I'll go to them next. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Sadhuti, and I am a resident of the Meiti Ward, having called Edmonton home since two thousand and eight. I'm speaking to you today because I've experienced the opportunities that come from the programs that will be offered at the expanded Winspear Centre. Completing the Winspear expansion will bring children and families to our downtown, create a community centre in the heart of our city, and transform the lives of young Edmontonians. In two thousand and thirteen, I was one of the first students to be a part of the Youth Orchestra of Northern Alberta, or Y O N A, program. Y O N A is a free after-school program that provides holistic support to children. Students have a safe place to go after school five days a week, get help with their homework, get a healthy snack, time to play sports, and learn to play an instrument. Today, Y O N A has sites in Boyle Street, Parkdale, and Queen Mary Park neighborhoods, and at the Winspear Centre. When I think of my childhood, I think of Y O N A. All the evenings spent practicing violin with my friends, break time where we got a chance to burn off all our energy in the park. I mean, have you ever played tagged with esteemed conductor Lucas Walden, because I have? The good chaos of concert days, and feeling like I had a place I belonged. For the first couple of months, we started off by learning with cardboard violins, and wow, were those our prized possessions. I think the teaching artists could tell by that pretty early on how serious we were about learning our instruments and how important being a part of Y O N A was to us. My carpa violin lives in my room with all its stickers and drawings I so carefully decorated with all those years ago as a reminder of my roots. Two years ago, I graduated high school and was awarded the Shulik Leadership Scholarship, one of only one hundred students across Canada to receive that honor. I just completed my second year of Electrical and Computer Engineering at the University of Alberta, and I'm working this summer as a student researcher in the Department of Chemical and Materials Engineering at the University of Alberta. Y O N A has provided me with opportunities that extend much beyond the realm of music and helped me to become more courageous. For example, engineering is hard. I love it, but it is hard, and it is competitive, and sometimes very, very overwhelming. But whenever I feel like I can't do it, I remember that Y O N A saw potential in me that I didn't know I had. I remember looking out at an entire audience of people who believed that kids like me, kids who might have not had access to all the same opportunities as others growing up, could make something of themselves. Today, I am asking you to use the C R L to finish the Winspear expansion and invest in the potential of kids like me. There is so much greatness to be achieved by our youth, and a program like this can help cultivate it. So my biggest hope is for kids to experience Y O N A like I did for years, decades to come. There is an opportunity today to finish the Winspear expansion, bring children and families downtown for high-quality programs, and make our city better. Please approve the amendments to the Capital City Downtown C R L and invest it in those children and families. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to Joel Leniast, but that's to answer questions only, right? No, they're not here, actually. Steve Weber, W H E I Sports Management.
Good evening. I'm Steve Weber, Director of B H E One Sports. I'll be here to answer any questions with respect to B H One Sports, but I'm smart enough to know I have Crystal Kaufman with me here to present for us.
That's pretty quick. Thank you. All right. Next, we will go to Crystal Kaufman then.
Honorable Mayor, City Councillors, I'm Crystal Kaufman. I'm here with Steve Weber, and as he said, we're representing B H E One Sports, Edmonton's premier ball hockey organization, and we're dedicated to bringing communities together through inclusive sport to express our strong support for the C R L extension and specifically the downtown Event Park component. B H E One Sports operates with a clear mission. We offer young individuals an exceptional ball hockey experience while fostering stronger community bonds through sport. It's just like what the Oilers do, but we use a ball instead of a puck, and we run, run, run. We serve the greater Edmonton area with inclusive leagues that cater to all ages, all skill levels, all kids, uniting diversity backgrounds on the field, both in recreational and competitive play. Our organization embodies values of teamwork, respect, and an exceptional enhanced player experience while creating positive opportunities for these young players. What makes B H A One Sports truly exceptional is our diverse portfolio of leagues and partnerships that ensure ball hockey is accessible to everyone. First of all, you heard from Tim from Free Play, which is an exclusive, which is a key partnership that we have. They remove all barriers of financial considerations family may struggle with, and we welcome them. We welcome newcomers to the sport. We enhance the motto, "Every kid deserves a shot," coined by the Oilers Entertainment Group. And this really is the key and foundation to all of us. The spring season, we had four teams from that organization join us, and one of the teams winning gold in the spring division. And the proud smiles on their faces honestly says it all. We have a girls' league with over three hundred players, fostering young female participation in supportive environment, and they are having their first all-girls tournament, and it's next weekend here, July fifth and sixth, and it's at the Fan Park. This initiative is bringing the players, coaches, and families to the downtown core that would normally not come downtown. We have coed leagues, bringing together players of all generations, all skill levels. We have our minor league. This is our huge league of sixteen hundred players. We grew over twenty-five percent this past spring and projecting another thirty percent next spring. We have full ice hockey teams joining us and an increase of double-A, triple-A kids that are joining us. Some U thirteen, U fifteen, U eighteen kids continue to compete at provincial westerns, nationals levels. Last year, three of our kids went to represent Canada and Czech Republic with one of our players scoring the overtime goal to win gold, bringing home gold for Canada, and those same players also have been drafted as W H L. We are proud of our U seven division, which we call our Future Stars, comprising of three- to six-year-olds of whom are just playing a sport for the very first time and just holding a stick. We had a record-breaking hundred and twenty kids, and the project is only growing. And lastly, our kids and teams across the province are continually excited to come back because we're having our third annual Ice District Classic held at the Fan Park here in August. This year being the largest yet, with families purposely planning their family vacations to either come or having a staycation here in Edmonton to be a part of this tournament. We're expecting thousands of visitors to the downtown core. These players are bragging about it on social media, and their friends are excited. Everybody wants to join. We have women's leagues of over six hundred, men's league of eighteen hundred, and we're talking about an emerging partnership with the Edmonton Seahawks Blind Hockey Association, expanding accessibility to visually impaired athletes. This comprehensive approach demonstrates our commitment to truly inclusivity, ensuring every member of the community can experience the joy of ball hockey regardless of background, skill level, or physical ability. We're able to serve both fun, rec, play, as well as highly skilled and intensive divisions. A critical component of our growth has been the partnership of the Oilers Foundation and O E G, which has been instrumental in the expansion of our ball hockey interest through Edmonton. Our kids are enjoying just because they're excited to wear the Oilers. Oilers gear supplied equipment, opportunity to play downtown in the Ice District. They honestly look forward to it. The collaboration has significantly increased family participation and youth engagement, drawing more children into the sport and creating lasting community connections. B H One is ready to activate this space immediately upon the completion of it, creating lasting positive impact for Edmonton's downtown. We urge you to support the C R L extension, and we look forward to bringing families and kids to the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Next, we will go to Tim Shipton.
Hey, thanks very much, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the two thousand employees at O E G Sports and Entertainment, I'm pleased to speak today in support of the C R L extension. We are community builders, and we take that role and responsibility very seriously, so we appreciate being a part of the discussion here today. Looking back over the past nine years to what has been accomplished since the opening of Rogers Place is remarkable. Edmonton now has Canada's largest sports and entertainment district that is helping drive the broader economy. We've seen five hundred and forty-six million generate economic activity, as we heard from other speakers, the last two Oilers playoff runs alone, and that's helping businesses across the city. We've seen over two million annual visitors to Ice District, many of them from outside the city and province. And we funded over a hundred and ten million into charities and not-for-profits across oil country via our community foundation, helping kids meet their potential and those in need. And we know from the two-point-five billion we've invested into the Ice District, it has driven the Capital City C R L, funding a variety of public infrastructure projects, including the next phase of development. We've transformed our downtown, created thousands of jobs, brought tremendous vibrancy, created confidence for others to invest and prosper, and most important, have brought Edmontonians together. But we know there's still significant work to be done for a thriving, vibrant, and safe downtown. Now, there's an opportunity to do something just as significant for the city with the extension of the C R L and expansion of Ice District. And we're ready to do our part alongside many of the people here today to continue the revitalization efforts. The new downtown community Event Park will be a community gem and completely unique in Canada. The Event Park will include great public realm space, indoor and outdoor facilities, to host a wide range of events and activities with at least one-third of the available time and space dedicated for community use, attracting more people and more vibrancy to the area. Over the years, and even Over the years and even recent months and weeks, we formed strong friendships. And partnerships with a diverse range of stakeholders and community groups who see great use for this facility. We've consulted with these groups who make up the rich and diverse fabric of Edmonton. Some of these community groups are here today to speak on behalf of their organizations in support of the C R L extension and in support of the revitalization of our inner city. And in support of programming space for their organizations to connect, play, grow and flourish downtown. And steps away is the Village at Ice District. An urban development that will include green spaces, amenities and most important. A variety of much-needed housing opt- options to meet the demands of our growing city. Housing will be developed in partnership with multiple organizations and feature numerous housing typologies. Including purpose-built rentals, student accommodations, affordable and attainable housing. Completing public infrastructure is a critical first step to advancing mixed-use development as the next phase of Ice District. The event park and village projects must work in concert as continued development amenities and activity is paramount to attracting residents to the new housing development. The revitalization of downtown Edmonton is a significant undertaking. That requires cooperation and collaboration between public and private partners. And we hope through this cooperation and collaboration, we can complete projects that will breathe life into downtown. And provide a legacy of infrastructure to be enjoyed by future generations. This is an opportunity to invest in the next round of catalytic projects, which will bring real returns to the city through the C R L. And attract even more development and investment. I want to close by thanking representatives of the city, uh, who we worked with to get here today. Your diligence and hard work is greatly appreciated and we're excited to get going and start the next great chapter of development in our city. This is a chance to make a generational investment in our city. And O E G pledges to be a partner who will continue to deliver for the city of Edmonton, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us, I understand that Mike Stelter has also joined us, we'll go to Mike, then we, our last speaker would be Gail Abu-Ghosh as part of this panel. Uh, so Speaker Stelter, please go ahead. Mike Stelter.
Mayor, he is online, he may be having some technical difficulties.
Okay, while, while they solve the technical difficulties, I'll go to Gail Abu-Ghosh.
Abu-Ghosh. Abu-Ghosh, yeah.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Sohi and Edmonton Councilors. Downtown revitalization is personal to me for many reasons. My name is Gail Abu-Ghosh and it has been my privilege to call Edmonton home since nineteen eighty. I currently reside in Ward Eight Papa Stew, if I said that correctly. In twenty twenty-three, I moved from a lovely neighborhood called Trumpeter. It was beautiful, serene and in nature. As a retired senior on a fixed income, I chose to move downtown. So that I could experience the heartbeat of the city, the financial and arts core of downtown Edmonton. And be a part of the revitalization previously spoken about. I'm so very happy I did. The vibrancy I've experienced, the people I have met, the restaurants and businesses I have visited sustain me and keep my life full. I was drawn to downtown for the ease of entertainment, the walkability score and to obtain a new home for myself. Although I note, we continue to recover slowly from the pandemic and we do experience challenges. It is for this reason new development is needed and new funding to attain and retain the vibrant downtown. I'm a fiercely passionate and devoted volunteer at the Windspear Center. I have witnessed for myself on many occasions, the joy and the delight the Windspear Center and the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra bring to many, many enthusiastic patrons. That attend the concerts performed by musicians who continue to deliver extraordinary performances day and night. It's truly rewarding to be part of an audience that gives a standing ovation for this symphony every single show that they play. They are adored and mean so very much to the Edmonton faithful who attend regularly, I see this for myself. The E S O has been in existence since November of nineteen twenty. The current home opened in nineteen ninety-seven. This center came to fruition because of a visionary. Dr. Francis Windspear dared to dream of a home where live music would thrive in the heart of the arts district. Where people in Edmonton would gather to enjoy live music relevant in Edmonton. Where musicians were employed and yes, investment was required. I would imagine then is in the case now that some people might question the validity of the investment of the C R L expansion amendment. The answer is yes. The opportunity to grow, nurture new talent, educate and provide an additional multi-use space concert hall. So that generations now and in the future can continue to evolve well into the future. This will provide sustainability, opportunity, help reduce barriers to folks visiting for the first time. Edmonton will benefit with capital private investment such as buildings, housing and parades, just as an example. Our, our vital core initiatives will be strengthened. The expansion brings our citizens together, which is vitally important to the health of any cities and its citizens. This is a public space that belongs to its city, to the citizens and invokes a strong sense of pride. Where music, arts and culture unite people. The Windspear is a rebound, resounding success. This is evident with Symphony in the Park, where fifteen thousand people over two days, thirty thousand in total, attend a free concert. And it's unsurpassed. The excitement I have also witnessed the past two years in playoffs is unsurpassed. Individuals have lined up around the street, around the block for an opportunity to be together. And cheer on our home team and be a part of something special. Young, middle-aged, senior citizens, Mama Stanny is an example. All congregated downtown because of the vision of the Kates Group and the Oilers Entertainment Group, another visionary. Think about this, five thousand folks in the moss pit, ten thousand in the fan park and another eighteen thousand in Rogers Place.
I am so sorry.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I am done.
That's great, that's great. I'll check if Mike Stelter joining us. We see them online. Mike Stelter. Okay, we are gonna go to questions of the panelist. Uh, Constable, Colonel, go ahead, please.
Great, thank you, thanks again to everyone that has come and made a submission tonight, so. Uh, my first question would be to Ms. McBrien, I think she's rejoined us.
I, I have, I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you, um, I, I was just wondering about, uh, what your, what your view might be and perhaps some of the feedback you've gotten from your members of your organization about, uh, about the need of a mid-sized venue in the city and particularly in the core. I think we'd frame this as a, the event center is a mid-sized venue, so thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, um, we've had a lot of conversations about this and, and for years, like when we were talking about the nighttime economy work. Um, we're losing a lot of shows, um, that simply don't have a place to go, I think the Starlight Room is hands down our, our sort of primary live music venue downtown that isn't an arena. Um, a lot of shows just aren't suitable for the Windspear or that sort of like sit-down venue. And from my understanding, the Edmonton Convention Center isn't really wanting to host a lot of um, those kinds of live music shows anymore, they do the occasional one, but it's not ideal, I don't think for the performer and promoter nor for, um, explore Edmonton. Uh, but I don't want to speak on behalf of them, that would maybe be better posed to them at some point. But my understanding is that we are losing out on shows that sort of that mid-size, just from the live music perspective. Um, that, that we really should be getting and should be getting downtown and it would really have a net benefit if we could.
And maybe just to be clear, that's a venue that doesn't have fixed seating in it, it's, it, like a
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, like rock shows, EDM shows, like just genres that are just not really a fit for, uh, some of our other venues.
Great, thank you, uh, maybe to Mr. Shipton, uh, you made mention of the two point five billion dollar investments that were made by O E G. At the beginning of the C R L as, you know, surrounding arena. I guess my question is, was that a mandatory part of the, of that arrangement at that time?
That was the crux of the debate at the time and it's interesting how time goes by, I remember. I was a young man when we first started talking about that and now I'm not, my kids were little, now they've both graduated. Mayor's lost a few hairs on top, but at the time that was the crux of it and that really was the, the decision that council had to make, the courageous decision at the time. Whether they would trust us as a partner. And that was what our organization deliberated on for an extended period of time, whether we could keep our promise. And so the original commitment as a part of the Rogers Place deal and the start of the C R L was a hundred million dollars in private sector development, subject to commercial efficacy. It was a risk at the time and fast forward to today, that number is now at two point five billion and counting.
So beyond the hundred million dollars, that was purely the choice of O E G to continue to invest in that space.
That's right.
And it, and those buildings are all paying property taxes that support the C R L.
That's right.
Uh, I'm wondering a little bit about activity in the event park, uh, I had the chance to walk through there on a game night. Uh, do you ever, can you provide a sense of, you know, how many people on average fill that space on a game night? Maybe both spaces, in fact, the event space and the Ice District space, average age, uh, do you turn people away?
It, it's interesting, we just ran the numbers, obviously just finished the season last year, we had over four hundred and thirty thousand um, people frequent the spaces within Ice District. And that includes over a hundred and fifty thousand people at our outdoor spaces and I'll, I'll remind you those outdoor spaces were free of charge. And we felt it was very important in particular for young people to be able to experience the coming together that they saw in the Oilers playoff run. Now, the Moss Pit, as it's called, certainly is not our demographic, but it is a young demographic. And it was really exciting to see so many young people come together in a safe and responsible manner and cheer on the team. So we had five thousand in the Moss Pit, we had ten thousand, uh, in the, in the fan park and then of course, eighteen thousand in the arena.
Right. Uh, I don't have a time for anymore, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you so much, um, uh, really, really appreciate everyone sticking with us and sharing your thoughts. Me too, uh, Speaker McBrien, just, I did want to capture, you know, I appreciate your map and sort of flagging, flagging the different way that projects have been delivered in the downtown and it's something I'll ask administration as well, but beyond some of these new buildings, I mean, we've also seen significant investment in existing buildings, correct? So I'm thinking H S B C, Manu Life Place, A T B, Lloyd's Sad, you know, those were
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so then maybe to Speaker Shipton and, um, appreciate you, you making yourself available. So I just, I thought you might be best placed to respond to some earlier comments around the assumption that, that Event Park is gonna operate at a loss. Is that, is that the intention?
Um, I think we, we have spent a considerable amount of time, uh, certainly in conversation with administration, conversation with members of council about the public benefit of Event Park. The margins are very thin on that facility, but we felt that if we were gonna move forward on this partnership. Uh, that that one-third public access was vital. This is not Rogers Place, this is not the conversation around that arena and what that project was going to do. This is about creating, um, a space that will have vibrancy and activity day in, day out. And so we fundamentally believe that that facility is vital to rounding out the vision for Ice District. Phase one was about sports and entertainment. Phase two is about providing the housing that's needed in our downtown core of the type that's needed. And you certainly have educated us, uh, on the type of housing that's needed right now. The event park and the amount of time that we've spent with community groups and the commitment to making the one-third, uh, public access work. Is our commitment to public benefit. We need to make it work, we understand that will be judged on that public access.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that and I think, I think there's some sort of questions around how that's structured. I think, you know, you, you referenced, um, your organization's commitment, um, to, to be partners. And I think that, that's another important part for, for Edmontonians to understand is that if ten years from now, Event Park wasn't sort of viable in the way that it was imagined now. Would you walk away from it or are you making a long-term commitment?
Uh, I, I think, uh, our commitment, um, to the city of Edmonton has been proven. Uh, we believe in this city, we've invested in this city, uh, we're incredibly fortunate, um, to be doing business in this city. So we're in this for the long run. Um, investments of this type and developments of this type are, are complicated, they're not easy. Twenty-five hundred units of residential, uh, doesn't happen overnight. Um, this event park, uh, doesn't happen without a strong partnership with the city and province and so, so we're committed, Counselor.
Yeah, great, thank you for that. Then just in terms of making that public access workable for, for the groups that may be accessing it. So is there flexibility in the configuration of the space? Um, is it always that full twenty-five hundred, are there ways to break that down and have smaller spaces?
Yeah, I think that's a very good question that we, we've spent a lot of time in consultation with groups about the type of design that will facilitate the broadest access. And we've certainly heard about the need for smaller bite-sized spaces for, you know, community leagues and other not-for-profits to be able to rent the space out at, at, at a price that works for them. Very excited about the outdoor space, we haven't really talked about it, but it in fact includes a canopy. Which will extend the seasonality of, of the outdoor space, so we're really excited about what we can do here, really excited and, and we've talked to so many groups in the community that say, hmm, this is, this is a space that we could see our organization use. And many of those groups, um, don't come downtown right now.
I'll, I'll leave it there and come back for more, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Constable Tang.
Great, thank you, um, I'll stay with you, Tim. Um, so if the event park, the margin is relatively thin, would you say that the, the Village at Ice when built out, the margin there will be a lot healthier, right?
That remains to be seen. You, you, you just don't know, right? You just don't know, develop, developing is complicated and contingent, many factors outside of our, our control. I, I will say this, that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go, no, please, go ahead.
Um, I, I would say this, we're committed to, if we are able to, uh, complete the master agreement this year. We're ready to get going on development, we're committed to that. As I said, part of this is the, the public infrastructure, the site servicing needed to accelerate that development. If we can ink that deal, we're ready to roll, we're ready to roll on, on the first units and we've had many conversations with um, other, uh, organizations, developers, post-secondary's, not-for-profits and others about the type of housing that's needed. We know that where the market is at and we know the type of housing that people need right now, that's what we'll build as prudent developers.
And I guess I, I ask because I just want to get a bit better understanding of, of the sequence. Um, because in the, in the, in the timeline, uh, you know, in Schedule A, that's part of this report. Um, Event Park and the Village at Ice are kind of simultaneous, uh, and along with Windspear for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And that's what's proposed and recommended by administration, but I'm not clear, you know, which comes first. And that's what's proposed and recommended by administration. But I'm not clear, you know, which comes first.
I I think you hit the nail on the head, that the these projects really need to work in in concert. We need to create the amenities, the public realm space, things for people to do, places for people to go in order for people to choose downtown as the place that they want to either live in, go to school, raise their raise their family. And so you can't really have one without the other. So the ideal scenario is that these projects are developed in parallel paths.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're we're taking lots of lessons around having multiple construction projects going out at the same time. But because I I I guess, you know, given some of the the constraints, I, you know, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, would you, can you foresee like housing first, for example, before the Event Park?
What we're focused on is giving these projects the greatest chance to succeed, right? That that's what we need to be focused on as.
Okay. Okay, I guess one more, just on the on the Village at Ice portion. You know, a while ago, you know, I had a motion that 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 gave direction for administration to look at some of the opportunities with district energy and connecting in. I guess, is that contemplated as part of part of the part of the that particular project?
The district-to-energy conversations have been a part of the project. We continue to have those conversations with administration.
I guess in your conversation, would the district energy be part of the Village at Ice, that particular line item? Or or is that something, you know, outside, let's say, with downtown infrastructure fund, which is a separate line item as part of all these new projects being added to the CRL?
Well, I think it's a little premature to say one way or the other. But what I would say is we're we're definitely open to that conversation. We know it's a priority of the city. If there's a way to to make that work within the the framework of this project and continue to advance it, you know, certainly we would look at it. But again, we're still in early days. We signed an MOU with the city and province based on pillar projects. And and I think those conversations, we're excited to continue to have them.
Okay, great. I have a I have a few more for others, but I'll come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Constable Wright?
Hi, okay, Tim, I'll stay with you. In your discussions with the province, did you note that housing was a priority? So sort of how did you order things with them?
I I think we'd look at it this way. Any successful partnership, the foundation of that is that everybody wins, right? A successful partnership is not one side gets what they want at the expense of the other. And so we know that housing, and in particular, various housing typologies are a priority of the city of Edmonton. And so as we advance those conversations in the beginning with the city, and then as we advance those conversations with the province, I think we've been strong advocates for the need for housing. I think we've been very strong advocates at the provincial level that we're bursting at the seams, and we need that housing desperately.
But you didn't sort of set a priority of of projects?
Versus.
Did you like, did you prioritize to them that you want to, you know, make sure the housing's done first? And and then we'll look after the Event Park and?
I I think, as I said, we we view those projects as needing to work in concert. You you don't build housing without amenities. You don't build housing without things that people need to be successful, whether it's families or individuals. And so we really view the projects working together.
I I don't know if if that, an Event Park is sort of, from from at least people in my ward, that's not sort of the amenities that they're looking for when they're when they're looking to buy a house. It's more the parks, the playgrounds and and things like that. But and I'm just also then wondering about the community benefit, about the the one-third for community leagues and and other other use in that. What do you see as being sort of the times that would be available to those to those groups?
Well, I think first of all, as we said, we're committed to at least one-third community access.
But would that be one-third of daytime use or one-third of evenings and weekends?
Well, I I think those details are are being worked out with administration. But I think we understand in order for the community to use it, that they need it at times that work for the community and work for community groups. And so I think we'd be, you know, we're committed to, whether it's through a committee with the city, other fashions, whether it's utilizing our Edmonton Oilers Community Foundation to help facilitate more access. We're very open to making sure this works.
So you'd be willing to give up prime time for concerts and other events, evenings and weekends?
We need to work prudently through a schedule that works for everybody.
So would would that mean they would have access evenings and weekends? I can't pin you down. Okay, then I'm just going to go to Panit, because sort of that's, you know, Panit, when I've attended events, it's 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 been evenings and weekends. So is that what you would be looking for for your use?
Oh, yes, of course. We have multiple events, not just for the concert, for scenes, but also.
Fading fading in and out just a little bit. Could you maybe speak up?
Oh, is this better?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so basically, the CSE has its own event, but also in a 24 society. And none of them have their own essence of that. So almost like all these societies would have multiple events in a month. Some of them would have a couple of events in a year. So and we almost have one a month.
Yeah.
So there are a lot of events that happen in our in our area. And suddenly, this facility, especially with the the canopy side, will be really awesome for some of our Gharba events that happen, there'll be like 2, 3, 4,000 people selected, and it's all a standing thing. And we also have some of our events where we want like a covered space with a stage. And I think I was really excited when I first came to know that this is being considered as one of the options.
Yeah, I mean, having that covered space for those rainy days, too.
And during winter as well, like we suddenly have some of our events, like Diwali happens during winter. I don't know whether it happened during winter.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, and I'll come back for another round.
Thank you. Constable Danz?
Thank you. I guess maybe I'll go to Panita first. I I or Miss, I guess McBrien, pardon me. Are you still with us?
Yes.
No, no, Panita McBrien, sorry. Thank you. Yeah. I guess I kind of, I'm I'm a little shocked to hear you, to hear your analysis that you think that city council has no leverage with this government, given the fact that some are suggesting we might be in an election as soon as a year from now. The premier just took two big L's in Edmonton's seats. And potentially, like, the premier's been clear with the the boundary redesign that they want to put seats in play, including Edmonton South and others, which could be suburban seats, that could be, you know, Edmonton South Devon or something like that. Do you do you think, though, like Peter Guthrie, when he left the government, said one of the reasons was he didn't, he didn't like things like this, where the premier was giving money to to a a private interest?
Michael, can we focus on the topic, please?
Yeah, I am. I'm I'm curious why you think if we right now didn't say, no, this doesn't work for us, why you think the government wouldn't be listening more than just from a seat count consideration?
I just, I reached out myself to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, trying to get some clarity on this. And my read on the situation is they would very gladly not give us $130 million or whatever that number was. I don't, I don't know that they even know really what exactly the win is here outside of these projects that they have put their support behind.
What do you, what, I, could you clarify that? Like what? Because I've been trying to figure out what the ministry wants here, too, and I've seen different statements from ministers and the premier, too. Like, I I, this is part of the reason why I think we should just put this back to them and say, what what do you really want here?
Yeah, I think it's, they want to invest in, this is what I've heard. They want to invest in success and proven success and real vibrancy that they know is going to be positive. And in Edmonton, the only thing we have from their perspective that meets that formula is what's what's sort of started in the ICE District. And so they are interested in investing in that momentum. And I I don't think the city is in a position to put forward any other projects or ideas that would have that level of proven success and capacity and momentum and all the things that they're looking for.
Do you have any members who are outside of the CRL?
Oh, yes, many.
And so they would not be exempt from the education property tax increase, right?
No, they would be taxed like anyone else.
And including the education tax?
Yep.
Yeah. Do you do you think, or have you heard feedback from them about the 2% education property tax increase this year?
No, I think you're not wrong that awareness is very low about that.
Because I've heard of some South Jasper businesses who may or may not be in your area saying they're paying more education property tax, and they feel they take umbrage with that.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't know that that's super relevant to this issue, but I don't think you're wrong that that's that's an issue.
Yeah, I I see it as relevant as the money raised from the education property tax with our left hand is going to go and pay for these things with our right hand.
And they have the power to do that.
And you don't think we should be pushing back on that? You think we should be accepting just the terms?
I think you have two options. I think you have the option to accept the deal as it's been presented or to walk away from $408 million. And and I don't, I do not like that, to be clear. I understand the frustration you're feeling. But I am just interested in working within the reality that we have to work within.
And you don't, you don't think that reality is clay? You don't think we can mold it? You don't think that Albertans are struggling with affordability and all of these pieces? And they see their education taxes going up and only one business receiving benefit? You don't see that?
I think you can push back all you'd like, and I think at the end of the day, you're going to have to decide if you are going to go with this deal as presented or walk away from the table.
Will you help us if we say no?
I I have, I I I have already. Like I said, I called the ministry myself to try and figure out what are the options here, and I am not confident that there are any options. I'm not confident that my help is going to do any good in this situation.
Thank you. Constable Hamilton?
Thank you. So maybe going back to something you just said, Ms. McBrien. You you said, you know, compared to the project we have in front of us. And and I'm going back to, this is fundamentally about expanding the length and scope of the CRL. Scope, meaning allowed, the allowed type of projects identified, and length of time, meaning an additional 10 years. You said that the city, and I may be paraphrasing here, the city is not in a position to put forward projects that kind of would bump or supersede this proposal, correct? Like, what what's in this schedule today, this, like, the city doesn't have, would not be in a position to to bump that that vision, so to speak. Am I, am I understanding you correctly?
That's my understanding, is that if if you go forward with an altered project list, you're starting from the beginning on negotiating whether this CRL extension will be granted.
So that says to me that this project list speaks to that that catalytic investment, and that sort of parallels what happened with Calgary's funding, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And while housing is really important, and infrastructure, like underground infrastructure, is really important. Unfortunately, I don't know that a lot of people would consider that catalytic unless there was a sort of placemaking, placemaking opportunity that came with that, is that your understanding as well?
I think so, yeah. I think the development that goes with that underground servicing, whether that's residential units, whether that's a public amenity, but yeah, usually that has to come come with something.
Oh, I'm going to shift to Mr. Shipton now. My my apologies, you're getting a lot of questions tonight. So something we heard from a lot of the speakers in opposition was that, and and just like, stay with me for a second here, was something we heard was that a lot of the opportunities that have come with the ICE District have sort of passed some of the small businesses by. So they don't necessarily get the customers on game nights, and certainly, and I'm sure you can relate to this, on non-game nights, there's a, I think the downtown in general has has struggled, or on non-event nights, I should say. And why I'm asking about this is because that was never, like, the current state we're at now, that was never the desired end state of the first phase of the ICE District development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so why I bring that up is because, as I recall, in the conversation around this in this entire development, going back to 2010, there was, as I recall, an understanding that the arena portion would come, and there would be a first tranche of sort of housing and corporate office tower development. And then the second phase would include that enriching densification, more placemaking opportunities. Is that, am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. So I guess why I go there is that you've you've also probably heard today some conversation about who is getting what and who wants what. Something that Mr. Griffith said in the first panel in support is that you never get everything that you want, but you get most of what you want. Would it be fair, I guess it's a very blunt question, did you get everything you wanted throughout these conversations?
No, we did not. I think, you know, we've been at this for for the better part of two years and have had extensive conversations with council and administration, and the deal has changed significantly, primarily related to ensuring, you know, all partners succeed in this deal. And and, you know, we take our role as partner of the city of Edmonton very seriously. We have kept our word. It is vital for us to keep our word. As one half of a successful partnership, there's a partnership that is talked about across North America as one that's succeeded. And so getting to where we're at today has required sacrifice and compromise and stripping of other ideas and and other initiatives, which we felt quite passionate about. But we're told we're not, we're not priorities. So we've landed on housing. We've landed on a great community space. And we've also landed on money for the demolition of the Coliseum and the extension of the CRL.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Constable Salvador?
Yeah, thank you. I'll stick with Speaker Shipton as well. So coming back to some of the questions that were asked around, I guess, the sequencing and timeline for Event Park versus the housing components, and understanding your answer about the complementary nature of both of those pieces, on the housing side, the amenity side. I guess, how how much housing do you build when you build an Event Park? What is, what is that interdependency? What are we talking in terms of, I guess, need on the housing side with that type of amenity?
Well, we, so we started with the vision for ICE District. Again, we've talked about it going back in time and and lots of discussion. We have 25 acres that we master-planned. We have developed 14 of the 25 acres in 10 years, which is pretty remarkable. As it relates to your question regarding regarding housing, we have made a commitment, and we'll make a commitment in the MOU and the master agreement to advance housing. We have to be prudent about the development of housing in conjunction with the development of the amenity that is the Event Park in order for the project to succeed. So right now, at MOU phase, which is where we're at, you know, you you can't just throw the dart and say, it's 100, it's 1,000, it's this, it's that. What we will commit to with rapidity is the beginning of real units of going vertical with our development.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And just jumping over to the the commitment to public benefit and the one-third public access, I guess I I'm just reflecting on one of the things that an earlier speaker brought up around, yeah, the the current arrangement around Rogers Place and the sort 28 times a year hasn't really seen as much as much use as some folks might have expected. Maybe learnings from that and how this can be different.
Yeah, that's a that's a very good question. I mean, it it all hasn't been been perfect along the way when you develop, right? You 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 make mistakes and and we acknowledge them. I don't necessarily think that was a mistake, but I think what we found is that the arena is so significant in size, it's hard for smaller community groups to to book it, right? And so, again, in contemplation of the continuation of this vision, we felt that a facility that had small meeting spaces, flexible space, different options, made sense, right? And so, again, as a part of the M O U and as a part of where we'll get to with a master agreement, we'll be definitive on that front. We're comfortable doing that. We're comfortable signing an agreement that brings specificity to members of council and the community that we're committed to it, and it's going to work, right? It 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 needs to work. This needs to be a place that has vibrancy and activity day in, day out. That's that's good for everyone.
Thank you so much. I'll just finish off with one more question to Speaker McBrien. Punida, are you still on with us?
Still here.
Awesome. Yeah, you know, I I guess I was hearing you reflect on case studies from different cities and how C R Ls have been used elsewhere. I guess what's really standing out to me about the conversation today is, yes, we're talking about C R L list, but there is also a deal associated with that. And, you know, the the inclusion of Event Park in the C R L list really is being positioned as a requirement for receiving that that broader funding opportunity, specifically as it relates to exhibition lands and the demolition of the Coliseum. So in your in your experience, is this a common way to, I guess, use the C R L as a tool and tie it to to broader arrangements? Have you seen that?
No, I mean, most of the examples that I would be talking about are from U S cities, and American cities tend to have way more power than Canadian cities have, so they wouldn't necessarily be in this situation. But the way that they would design these programs, and it's often called like tax increment financing or something like that there, is that private projects would just be included in the program design. Like, these these things are usually designed around projects like Event Park and not not so much just public realm stuff.
Thank you, Counselor Principay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just continue with Punida McBrien. You had said something about the public-private project being the one that's helped to make the current C R L successful. Do you see that 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 type of partnership is essential in in creating the a success to the C R L if it is extended?
Yeah, that's that's kind of like, you know, I've been thinking deeply about this, like, I know all of you have, and trying to, you know, understand and square all of this and and what's the best thing for our city. And I think one of the speakers from admin earlier said, there's no guaranteed tax uplift with C R L investments. And I think that's a flaw in how Canadian cities often do C R Ls, because, again, in most U S cities where they're incredibly successful with these tools, it's built on private sector partnership, because you are guaranteed the uplift when you have hundreds of billions of dollars coming from the private sector. Like, it immediately creates exactly the uplift that you need to actually pay off the investment in the first place. So I think this whole, like, you know, using the money for for city projects, city infrastructure, public realm improvements with zero tie to any actual private investment or economic activity is really risky. And so that's where I think that public-private partnership, where we know we have a motivated actor who's going to act in their best interest to make this successful, makes the whole thing work and guarantees that there is some some economic benefit and uplift out of the whole thing.
Okay, great, thank you for that answer. Next, I'm going to go to Lara McClelland. So earlier, we heard from some students who were in opposition, because they they had suggested that maybe we should be putting money towards housing instead. And yet, you're here speaking in favor because of the housing for students. So I'm just trying to come to terms with that. Can you explain, maybe, how would you explain to those students the benefit of this?
Sure, thank you very much for the question, Counselor. I can talk a little bit about the the dire state of housing in Edmonton's downtown. McEwen in 2023 had cooperative arrangements with Nate and Norquest to offer housing for students. In 2024, that wasn't possible, and by the middle of August, we were at full capacity with a waitlist. As of right now, our residence, which is 860 beds, is at full capacity. So last, as of last month, there was a waitlist. So what McEwen has been doing over the past 14 months is working with a number of property managers, developers, social housing agencies, members from the administration here, and other thought leaders to come up with a program that makes housing available for our students. Our core business is teaching. It's not to own, operate, nor maintain a net new residence. So we're looking at how we work with partners to provide housing for students that is accessible and affordable. We have predictive modeling that shows what our growth looks like. We've done surveys with our students around what affordable looks like, what amenities they wish to see, and that's been part of the package that we've been working on over the past 14 months.
Okay, great, thank you for that answer. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Principay. Counselor Cartmel, can you take the chair, please?
I have the chair.
Just to follow up on that, so having more supply of housing in downtown, and this proposal would create additional 2,500, and there are other projects in the works. So that supply will help accommodate more students living down there, plus probably bring down some of the cost for rental.
Right, so if you look at our growth and what we forecasted, that with 10,000 new students coming onto campus by 2030, and that's not growth for growth's sake, that's based on the demographics of the province and the growth that we're seeing in K through 12, and it's probably a conservative estimate, 34% of our current student population rent. So with 10,000 new students coming onto campus, that's approximately 3,400 net new spaces that would be required for those students.
So we could use far, far much more housing downtown.
And the majority of our students have asked for housing in the downtown, walkable, safe spaces.
Got it, got it. Speaker Shipton, I came into this place with a lot of doubts about the downtown arena project.
I remember.
2007, 8, 9, 10, we had lengthy conversations, because I was really doubtful whether it will pay for itself, whether we will have additional private sector investment, and we put a lot of conditions. I think those conditions helped, right? And same, it's kind of happened here, too, like, we have conditions that you have to abide by when you come for master agreement approval to council, and there'll be an open public conversation in September.
That's right, that's the crux of it. I I remember many heated meetings with you and Counselor Iverson at the time, and Counselor Gibbons, and Brian Anderson, and on and on it goes. And and we hadn't proven ourselves at that time. And there was rightly some skepticism and and reasonable questions asked.
And skepticism is, healthy skepticism is good, because it helps make deal a better deal, and that actually happened. Now we saw $2.5 billion of private sector investment in the downtown core that is creating opportunities. So I want to come to the Village on the Ice. Like, the infrastructure investments, the public sector infrastructure investment that are required to unlock their housing, you, as a proponent of housing, you'll be required to upfront their money investment, right?
That's correct.
So you would have a vested interest to ensure housing happens, to in order to recoup their money back through increased property taxes.
That's how it works, that's right.
Okay, and and you would also have a vested vested interest to ensure that all the partners or the organizations that are here supporting the fan park are actually reasonably satisfied with access when that access happens, weekends, evenings, daytime. Like, if they think they're not going to have access, they'll be coming back in September saying, we don't support this deal. So you have a vested interest to ensure that that partnership actually works.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay. On the is this thing focused on the on the fan park? I know there's a lot of concerns about subsidy to private sector, but my understanding is that as a private sector operator of a city facility, city-owned facility, you would be responsible for day-to-day operations, paying for them, you'll be responsible to put money aside for major repairs.
Correct, yeah, yes.
And if there are any cost overruns, you'll be responsible for those cost runs, overruns.
That is correct.
So there's a lot of kind of checks and balances being built into into something that we will have a more lengthy conversation in September. Okay, good, thank you. Out of, I'll move the second round.
Second.
Please vote on the second round.
Amy, yes. It's not coming up, yes. Counselor Rutherford?
Thank you, Counselor Rutherford. Thank you, Counselor Paquette. I heard yes.
Rice, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Rice. We have all the votes.
Please display the vote. Sorry, please display the vote. That is carried, and I'll reach in the chair.
Thank you so much. We'll get the list back. Here we go. Counselor Stevenson?
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, my question really dovetails from from the mayor's comment about checks and balances and recognizing, you know, we're not at the master agreement stage yet, but again, I think there could be some some opportunity for Edmontonians to hear some of those those pieces that could be put in place. So again, to Speaker Shipton, I think we, again, we heard from you that you're looking to ensure that space sizes and schedules work work for the nonprofits. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Great. I also heard, well, I'm not, did I hear a commitment to connecting into district energy for Village and an Event Park?
Yeah, yes, we're comfortable advancing, yeah.
Great. Just in terms of the interest in some of those more local sales, supporting some of those local businesses, so would Event Park be subject to the same restrictions that exist in the arena?
I'm sorry, related to?
Like vendor, the beer, for example, beverages, food, are you able to provide more local offerings in Event Park?
I think that's something that's very important to to O E G, is that we source local vendors. The the list of local vendors is significant, not my area of expertise in the company, but I do know that there is a mandate to source locally where we can, things like, you know, beef, Alberta beef, the pretzel example, that is factual, pierogies, et cetera.
Local breweries.
Yeah, yeah, so I think all those agreements, again, it's premature at the M O U phase, but we do know that this facility will be different than the arena, just by virtue of its operation.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to to circle back. We saw in the presentation today, the intention at at Village at Ice District is for there to be 260,000 square feet of retail. Is that correct?
I think what we can say on that front is our our primary focus, number one focus, is housing, is housing. If it does not make sense to add retail, if it does not make sense to add commercial, we won't do it. We won't do it. We will respond to where the market is at, and our focus right now is ongoing, well, our focus right now is taking this M O U to a definitive master agreement with significant level of detail, that we feel comfortable, that our partners will deliver on their commitments, and we will deliver on our commitments. But as it relates to housing, we understand we have to be flexible to where the market is at, where the demand is at in downtown Edmonton, and right now, we know that is on student housing.
Yeah.
And others?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's great. And I think I think it is just, it it's standing out to me, because I think what I understood from the the C R L report, or the new the new Schedule A, is that the whole of the C R L area is anticipating 280,000 square feet of of retail. So so again, just maybe just, and I can follow up with questions to administration, but I think I'm understanding from you that 260,000 is is sort of an upward amount that could potentially be integrated at Village?
As I said, we're focused on adding the units of housing that are needed. We know that these developments will likely require commercial, right? That's very typical, as you know, Counselor Stevenson, that you want mixed use. So we are moving forward on the thesis of mixed use, but I don't want to say that the vision for that project is rigid and set in stone, because as you know, you have to be flexible to respond to the market. So I would say that our vision is flexible to market demands, and we want to build a development that has the amenities that people want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Wright, sorry, Counselor Paquette?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And maybe to Mr. Shipton, I've got a quick question that I think that the public will want to know in this conversation, and that is, and I think Counselor Stevenson referenced this with master agreements and and whatnot, but the idea here is that this is, you know, the next step would be that we enter into an agreement that both parties find mutually acceptable. And if it's not acceptable, and if it looks in any way like it's a poor deal for Edmontonians, I think we should put it on the table right now, that it's understood that 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 would not go forward. Yeah?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And I I just think that's really important to put on the record, because I think people really want a lot of transparency in this conversation, and if the more we can actually dispel some of those fears, the better, you know, we've, and so I'm just, the next question I have for you then, after that, is that you and I have had conversations about my worries about, you know, if this were to go forward, sort of that sterilization of 104th Avenue. Have you given any thought to that, to that concern?
Yeah, I've given, we've given a lot of thought to that, to that, to that concern. As you know, we've had, we've had a vision in the master plan for Ice District of how we can make the 25 acres in the heart of downtown, how we can make it work. And certainly, that south side of Event Park is going to be vital to have vibrancy at street level, going to be vital to have good pedestrian accessibility, crossing 104th, and ensuring that people from the north side of downtown can get to the south side and enjoy amenities and vice versa. So we are looking at, you know, the overall streetscaping, both on the south and north side of that project. It it has to flow. If you create spaces that people can't get around, or they're confused, or or whatnot, it won't work, right? So so that was very well taken, and it's something certainly we've taken to our construction and design group, and we'll be built into the into the project if it, when it moves forward.
Great, thank you. And then and then last, you know, we've heard a lot of concerns that, and I I don't re- Great, thank you. And then and then last, you know, we've heard a lot of concerns that, um, and I I don't recall. The promise being made, but uh, this idea that um. If if there's investment in the downtown, that 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 solves the social issues, which I don't think it will. I think. You solve the issues by solving the social issues, um, you solve investment and capitalization through that process, so. I, maybe just your thoughts on that, about that, that part of the conversation.
Well, you know, that's a, that's a fundamental and very large issue for our city and and so many cities across North America. It can't be solved by one, by one entity. We 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 certainly know that we have a part to play. I think we've tried to be responsible, um, you know, corporate citizens in the downtown core. Um, we can't solve it on our own. It's going to be obviously solved through the community. Partnerships with orders of government, but I can tell you this, if the project doesn't go forward and if the original project hadn't gone forward. Imagine where those social issues would be today in the city.
I I can't, there's no data, one way or the other, but I'm gonna put on a hot seat real quick and uh. I I know you can take it. Um, you know, the public uh well remembers the the Boyle Street issue. Um, and I I just, I wonder if there's an update on that or any uh thoughts or learnings about that.
Well, I'm very happy to report that the relationship with Boyle Street is in a very good place. You know, we we know the folks at Boyle Street very well and we have a tremendous amount of respect. For the role that they play in our downtown. Obviously, the the, you know, the disagreement and issues between our two organizations. Uh, you know, was not good, was not good for the city and certainly was not good for our organization and upon reflection, uh. You know, we we wish that there had been an alternative path and and you you learn from it. Very happy to report that where we're at today is looking forward to the opening of King Thunderbird, which we are. Uh, a foundational partner of, and so we're excited about where the relationship will go. We've reinvigorated and reinvigorated it.
Thank you. Uh, Constable Tang.
Great, thank you. Uh, I'll switch some to some other speakers for now. Um, Punit. Punit, not Punita, uh, if you're still online.
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, thanks for being here. Um, so your organization is mostly, and and the membership, the the member. Organizations are, would you say they're mostly on the south side and maybe a bit on the very north side?
Uh, yes, so most of the Indian community is on this outside, but certainly the pockets of it on north end is there.
Right. Um, and for, I think you talked about events like Garba and I'm thinking of Ratri, which, you know, venues like Butter Dome. And now more Expo. Why, why is it important to you to have? Um, and those events go up to like three to five thousand people. Why is it important to you to have access to a facility that's downtown?
So, I know it's mostly south side, but the downtown with the canopy, it actually makes it like more open. If you look at the events that they have, it becomes like uh too congested. But if you have a bigger place than especially during the winter, it just makes more sense for uh, because. I know parking can be an issue, but I think there'll be some solution being thought about for the parking as well.
So it would just be important to come bring more people to downtown who probably typically don't spend a lot of time.
Yeah, and we also, you know, even uh convention centers, uh, we have people coming to try sports events and one other thing that. Again, we stay away from the convention center again is because of the parking issues and and of course, the expensive. Charging also, so if you have something which is more easy accessible for the community events, I think it would be much more. Suggested in in place.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if Sir Judy or Gail. Or uh even Kevin, uh, all of you spoke very much in favor of the Wind Spear. Uh, and certainly, you know, I'm very glad that they're they're on this list. I'm wondering if you, you know, given the conversation so far and all that you have heard, do you have any thoughts about the other projects uh that are on the C R L list?
So, um, sorry, that's for me or?
No, no, so that's for either Kevin or Sir Judy or um, Gail.
Uh, it's Kevin here. My concern, and look, is this in my mind, the perfect mechanism? No, probably not. But is it an adequate mechanism? Yeah, more than more than adequate. And my concern personally is. This problem uh doesn't get better with time, and I think time is of the essence, at least for Wind Spear. It's.
Yeah.
Ready to go uh to completion and will have a really, I think, a really great impact on the downtown.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Sir Judy or Gail, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, yeah, I would like to add something. I would say that all of these projects intersect. And that they create an opportunity for um many citizens to come together. In particular, the Wind Spear has a rich history in Edmonton. But the other projects, I do believe the Oilers Entertainment Group has proven themselves over time. And that they've created a space that is beyond imagination. That we are looked upon with admiration from other cities because of our fan base.
Great, thank you. Um, sorry, I have one minute left, and and I'm just gonna pop over, pop, pop over to um, to Punita. This time, um, Punita, you you talked about some of the, um, because of the lack of the mis sized venues, we've had some loss of. Events, but do you have any data on that of as from D B A?
I don't. I probably should, but um, I feel like that's one of the things that we talked about, maybe sitting within the nighttime economy office that. Doesn't exist.
Yeah, gotcha. You know, certainly, I I think that comment makes me also think about. You know, other opportunities and I think we've had lots of example. Um, where investment came and then we actually lost it, right? Um, because of downtown and and whatnot. Um, anyways, I'm running out of time, uh, so thank you all very much.
Okay, uh, Constable Wright.
Thank you. Um, who will I go to? Um, Mr. Woznak. You talked about how um, there's a number of cities, I guess, um, centering their redevelopment around. Similar, I guess, event parks or recreation. Can I, can you give me some examples? Because I'm not aware.
Well, I I I won't be able to speak as intelligently about event parks and entertainment focused developments in other cities, but I can tell you what other cities are doing to. Create vibrancy and and um spurred uh investment development partnerships, which cities like Calgary, Detroit. Chicago, Houston and Atlanta are all excellent examples to study, to see how their municipal governments have approached. The communities at large to to incentivize and partner in order to transform their struggling downtown centers.
So, and so you, I'm sorry, you said Houston, you said Calgary. And and they've sort of centered around an entertainment type district or?
A city like Calgary is 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 um, is working through an entertainment as one angle of of um elevating their downtown, but they, as. Um, Larry McClellan has has mentioned in terms of. The good fortune that Edmonton has with our post-secondary population downtown, Calgary does not, and so they are, they create an incentive. An investment from their city to the post-secondary community and education community to bring students. And their educators into downtown.
Okay, because I I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be? Wouldn't it be better to have a steady stream of revenue with rental high rises as opposed to, I think. It was said tight margins with an event park, like from an investment perspective?
Multiple things can be true, so I don't believe that there is one dimension that should be the only path forward. Numerous opportunities should be explored, so I would say that there's uh various scenarios that 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 need to be executed.
Okay, um, I'm, okay, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Shipton. Um, the fourteen of the twenty five acres that are developed. How many acres does Rogers Place take? I, because I'm assuming that's part of the fourteen, right?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
So how many acres is that on?
Oh, Rogers Place, give or take, four to five acres.
Okay, so then beyond, beyond that, then ten.
Sorry, yeah, so so phase one has included uh Rogers Place. Edmonton Tower, Stan Tech Tower, the J W Marriott Legends. Has included the Plaza, the Parkade, Connect Center. Uh, I'm probably missing a few, but that's what I can.
So that's the fourteen.
That's the fourteen.
Okay, okay. I was just trying to figure out how much. Um, and then. Just following up on um, like the food and beer service in that, um, or liquor service. Um, what about culturally appropriate food? I mean, I'm thinking of Punit, um, with some of the festivals and that that they have. Has that been considered, that they would either be allowed to bring in their own? Or would food services be made available to them?
I think that's, I think that's a great idea on a case by case basis. A big part of um. The activities that we want to bring into uh the event park are are cultural. And we've had some tremendous conversations with Punit and his organization and others, so I certainly think we would be would be open to that. And uh, would be exciting if we could move it forward.
Because I know there was one community organization that was looking to have some festival and wanting to do it in Rogers Place, but because. Of the fact that they couldn't bring in their own, their own food service. Um, they had to forego, forego that, so I, that's just something that I wanted to bring up to make sure that that was considered.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Constable Janz.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll start with uh guest Gail, uh, I'm sorry.
Abagush.
Abagush, thank you. Um. We talked about this earlier. I'm not sure if you were in the room or not. Were you aware that uh, in the provincial budget, they raised the uh provincial. Property tax two percent?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, so have you noticed that or like when when you got your statement, did you see a, an increase there?
Well, here's what happened with me. I moved from Trumpeter to the downtown core. And I actually live in Stan Tech Tower. I rent there, so property taxes are no longer. My issue to bear, so to speak, although indirectly, of course, it's contributed through rent.
Because one, one thing I hear from people is saying kind of like, we love the Wind Spear, we want to support the Wind Spear. This is the only way we can support the Wind Spear, so even though we don't like the hundred and thirty million for the Oilers, the O E G, we. We want to make sure the Wind Spear gets their thirty and this seems to be the only way to do it. Um, and where I'm concerned is, we're already paying an extra fifty million in education tax this year. That if we go to the province together and say this is not fair, it's not just, the Wind Spear needs to be taken care of. Do you think, do you think there's resonance in that?
Well, I've heard you raise this issue throughout the day and I understand your concern regarding it. And obviously, you've heard from individuals in the community that are concerned and I certainly respect that. On the other hand, I think there's such a thing as serviceable debt. And that there is good debt and in this case, because of incomes generated. I do believe that it won't affect property taxes.
But it already has, like you're, we are all paying fifty million more this year.
That's correct, but not for this particular project.
But it is, though. It's education tax that's going up, that's going to the province, that they're then giving back to us.
I have heard you say that. So remind me what your particular question is.
Like I'm, I think if we, if we had the fifteen million and if we had a grant that we could say, here you go, we're gonna pay off the Wind Spear in year one, we're gonna. Um, set aside grant funding for housing for year two, we're gonna, you know, put it towards homeless shelters for year three or something else. Isn't that a better deal for taxpayers, for everybody? It's predictable, it's not risky. It's not, you know, rising on development costs or something else, or housing starts or something, it's. If if the province, the province has already raised our taxes, they just gave us the money to allocate. We could take care of the Wind Spear, we could take care of the sports, we could take care of the arts, we could take care of everything here, except for maybe the Oilers, but.
Yeah, your perspective, perspective is appreciated. I have uh listened to Mayor Sohi explain um. That this is a good deal and I believe it's a good deal.
Well, appreciate you coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Um. I think I'll hold off, thanks.
Uh, Constable Cardinal?
Great, thank you. So, uh, to Mr. Woznak. I'm gonna hopefully not overstep and say that I I think, at least in this panel, you're the most. Uh, experienced in terms of commercial land development investment in the downtown. Can you, in your mind, over the last ten years, what are the investments that have been made that have had? The most material impact on commercial development in our core?
We used to be a city where there was a flight to price and low cost with. Low expectations of value would win the transactions. Today, the neighborhoods that are winning is through a flight to vibrancy. So good call, good quality, doesn't have to be the best quality in a neighborhood that is vibrant. Street level activation and feel safe, that's where the transactions are happening. That's where employers want to go. That's where their employees are saying they want to be. That's where investment is happening with small business owners. They are choosing vibrant neighborhoods. The flight to vibrancy is where transactions are taking place.
And and so where are those most vibrant neighborhoods at the moment?
Well, thanks to the team that put the C R L together that allowed that the Ice District to unfold, we have. You know, incredible mix of attractions, so great hotel and and hospitality and office buildings and. And and the halo effect is very apparent, so it's not just about, you know, shuffling the deck. Um, one neighborhood's success doesn't mean another neighborhood's peril. It's about growing the ecosystem.
So what would be the next investment to focus on then? If there was, if there was gonna be um. You know, something that was gonna drive that vibrancy, drive that market, expand that halo, if you will, is, is the deal that we're talking about today. Going to add that vibrancy, create those spaces that will attract that investment?
There was a time when you would be able to drive higher value and activation at street level if you filled your towers. Today, in order to fill your towers, you need to fill your ground level.
Yeah.
Right? So ground level space is now a giveaway, because it gives you a chance to fill your towers. So, you know, we're gonna look back ten years from now and say, were we ever lucky that we had this opportunity through this partnership financial model to deliver this? This, this opportunity is what drives vibrancy. Uh, this is what unlocks the potential for a lot further development. And, you know, changing the perception, the feeling, the health strategy, I understand that's a really important topic around the sensitivity of what we can do better with a health strategy. A safety strategy and we need to continue on that path. That is a different topic that needs more work. This is about um, uh, elevating our opportunity through a path through hospitality stra- uh, and and and. Uh, the strategy that that allows us to go further in a much more meaningful way through a partnership model.
There's, there's been a bit of a thread today that's kind of, and I'm like, like, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth or anything, but that it's almost binary. That it's, that it's either investments in, uh, you know, in safety or. Uh, the social service ecosystem or housing, or it's this. But I. I guess I'll just say that it's my view that if we're going to have the resources we need as a city and not just a corporation. Not just the city of Edmonton Corporation, but as a city writ large, that we need a thriving, expanding. Economy and a thriving, expanding business economy to provide that non-residential tax base, to provide employment, et cetera. Uh, we've heard earlier today, I forget who said it, but that, you know, our two opportunities for that are are uh industrial development and downtown. Does that resonate with you? Does that make sense that we? Does that resonate with you? Does that make sense that we, you know, if we, if we float these boats, we will float other boats as well?
Yeah, I think you, you absolutely nailed it. That was something that struck me earlier as well, is that too often conversation goes to binary expectations. You don't go from unsafe to safe, you don't, it, it's about progress. Is, is it safer? Is the perception changing? Is the movement, it, um, better going forward than it was looking backward? And so, you know, it's these opportunities that allow progress to be made.
It's a creeping normalcy thing, that if we can create that ever improving creeping normalcy, should that be our goal? Should that be our target?
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Cardinal, Consul Nak.
Uh, thanks Mayor Sohi, and thanks again to everyone on the panel here. I think, uh, I'll, also, you know, I'll, I'll sort of jump on that point, Mr. Woznak, cause I wanted to get a sense, cause for me, the, the reason I somewhat view it as a little more binary right now, is, is a few reasons. One, limited financial resources, we can't do everything, we can't be everywhere that, that is, and, and I appreciate one of the earlier panelists talk about, you still have to have a growth mindset, which we do, but we also often get, um, feedback from many of those same groups around how much growth we should be, uh, advancing, especially during property tax season. And, um, that, that push around the social side is something that really resonates with me because you know, we did see a fairly large investment through the initial C R L and for a variety of reasons, right? This is not, this is clearly the pandemic played a major role, all these things, but I think it does seem like we are in a worse situation on the social side than we've been possibly in our city's history. And so that, that sits pretty prominent in a lot of people's minds, and I guess I wanted to get a sense of like, in a world where we don't have unlimited resources, like how do we, how do we tackle that? I know, I know you're not, you're the expert on the commercial side. The, the social side is, uh, we've got other experts, but I just wanted to get a sense from you of what you're seeing, hearing in other cities, how we, what are, what's working in other areas to, to have that more meaningful shift on the social side?
There's the data that would speak to what is or isn't working on the isolated social perspective. And then there's another issue around the perception of those very issues. And so the cities where this feels to be less of an issue, but the data tells a different story, is that it's a very, very similar issue, but the perception tells a different story. We are a city that behaves on anecdotes, not on data. So where, where consumers choose to consume is based on how they feel, based on an anecdote that they believe is still true, but they heard it a year ago. But the data says that things are better a year, um, in the making and, and it's not nearly good enough. We, we, we have, we have so much growth and improvement to be seen, but the data needs to, to be understood. And the perception is unfortunately what leads to progress. And you need to overcome the perception, uh, in order for people to believe differently and have the confidence to, to, uh, to make some choices that will improve downtown.
No, I appreciate that, yeah, I mean, we're facing it even if EPS's stats have got the lowest crime rate in more than a decade and yet not necessarily the perception of folks right now in our city and, and so that's, that's a struggle. Mr. Shipton, I think the last question I have, or the only question I, maybe I'll have on your end, uh, cause you've been asked so many questions today. Uh, I heard in an answer to Mayor Sohi, there's, there's gonna be some more work between now and September on the master agreement. We've heard from folks, uh, expressing on the opposition side around that desire for more engagement and, and obviously you've already done a lot of engagement with different community groups. What, what does the engagement look like for you? So let's, let's assume this word to pass. Uh, what does the engagement look with the broader community between now and September on the master agreement to address things that we heard from speakers in opposition about, you know, whether it's the breweries and the local pieces that, and you've been asked about that, or making sure the community group piece is being addressed in a, in a significant way. What's, what's that engagement process look like for you over the next three months?
Yeah, I, I really think the work ahead is, is multifaceted, we, we still have um, work to do with administration, um, on the master agreement and, uh, detail's a good thing, right? Detail in an agreement and in a deal, uh, reduces risk, right? It reduces uncertainty, it breeds confidence and credibility, uh, in the deal. In the meantime, I think, you know, we will continue, um, uh, our engagement, we'll continue our consultation, it has helped inform the project. It has led to material changes in, in our view, in particular related to, uh, Event Park about how it will work. So, I mean, the session today and the discussion tomorrow has been incredibly informative, I think, for all of us and it, it just makes sense for us to continue to have our ears open um, to the, uh, input from the community and stakeholders and take that and, and, uh, see where we can make it work.
Is there a, uh, an idea or, you know, I'm gonna be out of time, so I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Consul Pickett.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, you know, my apologies, we've got, we've got a gentleman who's been fielding questions in the front row and I, I don't have my speakers listening for me, I don't recall your name, uh, but I would like to continue questions with you. But, uh, does anyone know who I'm talking about?
My name's Corey.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Yeah, um, so, so Corey, um, you, you're talking a bit about like, uh, um, non-zero sum game, uh, kind of theory there and, uh, I wanna explore that with you, this idea that it's not either or and that even in a, um, environment of, of limited funds, there are still lots of interesting decisions that can be made. Um, and specifically, um, I recall the state of downtown from the nineties on, when it was easier to kick the can forward uh, to the future than to spend the money to invest in a crumbling infrastructure. And, uh, I, I was just wondering if we could get your thoughts on what the introduction of the C R L did for that in removing, uh, some of those decisions from self-interested political decisions?
Well, I think that there is, uh, there's, there's the, the, um, the understanding of, of progress, uh, is built on momentum and so when C R L is successful, it's always the hardest to, to, um, convince the early adopters, the pioneers, but once you build momentum, uh, there's a shift that happens and so those first few developments, those, those first transactions, those first businesses that open up, um, that is, begins the locomotive theory, it's that first rotation that's the hardest and you start to build on something and so you know, it's, it's, it's where capital comes from, is when they believe that the puck is going in the right direction, that this community is worth investing in, that businesses are choosing to make a decision to relocate or to expand and open up in a, in a neighborhood that over the last handful of years, they would have turned their backs on.
Yeah, and, and that makes me think of how we incentivize, um, clusters and super clusters for, for hubs. And, uh, how would you describe that then as the downtown? Like, if we were to look forward and say, listen, if we are getting incredibly intentional about this and we're not just going to do some nice things, we're going to intentionally create the best economic situation possible for Edmonton and this is how we're going to do it, how would you like to see conceptually that leverage be applied?
Well, I appreciate that, that, that you all are considering various ways to create momentum and it's through arts, it's through recreation, it's through diverse housing and it's family supportive housing, it's student housing. It's, it's creating an opportunity to appeal to every dimension of individual and new Emmetons and new, new, uh, new Albertans and new Canadians are one part of that story. It's, it's those that are moving away from their parents' basement to go to school at, at McEwen and rent their first apartment. Um, it's, it's, you know, investing together with those businesses that are choosing to, to, uh, to be a part of the downtown fabric and grow their business. And that small business owner that's finally gonna open up a ground level business, that would only do it if they know that the neighborhood is shifting in a positive way and not the current way. So it begins with what you are all considering today and, you know, five years from now, seven years from now, we'll say that was a turning point.
Yeah, and, and at that point, everyone says, oh, I supported that in the first place. But, uh, yeah, okay, great, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Consul Pickett, Consul Cardinal, can you take the chair? Just to, okay, just carrying on that conversation, uh, Speaker Woznak. Uh, you talked about data telling different stories than people's perception. So is data telling us that downtown is getting better over the last few years?
Can you help me, um, understand, better in which?
Better mean safer, cleaner, more people, business, like is, is it better where we were, say, three years ago from the vibrancy per point of view? Are we on a, on a, on a path to say recovery, well, how, whatever word do you wanna use?
Marginally.
Marginally.
Unfortunately not better enough. It's, it's, it's taking a lot to convince folks to, to trust that it is better now than it was. It's marginally feeling better.
Cause I'm, what I hear, like people who haven't been downtown for past two couple of years, when I hear from them or downtown, their perception is downtown is not safe, I'm not gonna go there. But I hear different stories from some of, not everyone, people who come downtown say, no, I came downtown, it's not that bad I thought it was, right? I think I hear that, so bringing more people downtown to see would help change that perception.
Yeah, precisely, the more people you see that feel more like yourself, creates the perception that things are more comfortable. And that lack of, 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 of people that you relate to, you see the disorder, you see something uncomfortable. And so having, that's the point around, you know, us comparing to other cities, that the other cities feel safer, feel cleaner, feel more comfortable simply because the, the, the higher volume of people that you can relate to. And, but in the absence of that, of, of a more vibrant downtown, you simply see what you are more uncomfortable seeing.
Yeah, now I, that's what I hear from Manchandra, they're gonna bring hundreds of more people to downtown. Speaker Manchandra, that's what I'm hearing from you, Tim Adams, right, that opportunities for the young people to experience downtown. Cause they otherwise would never have if they were not able to come downtown to participate in your programs in partnership with the, the Oilers Foundation.
Yes, exactly, the, so many kids have never crossed the river. Going over the bridge the first time was pretty scary, but then once you get down here and as I mentioned, you get to start looking around and see that these spaces are for you. And to Corey's point, you start to see people who look like you down here.
Yeah.
You start to feel safe.
Good, uh, last question, just wanna close the loop on, uh, on Wind Spear, uh, Speaker Shipton, Shipton, sorry. Uh, Wind Spear was not included on the project lists earlier on and concerns were raised from council members that Wind Spear must be included because it's such an essential project for downtown and this is the only tool that way we can fund the completion of the project. Uh, I reached out to the province and I reached out to you to ask for your help if you could, through your channels, do some advocacy, can you speak to that?
Yeah, it's certainly something that, uh, you know, has been a part of this journey, we've been on this journey for a sig- significant period of time and early in the journey, Wind Spear wasn't, uh, high on our radar, it became high on our radar after Anne Marie, uh, you know, came in and educated our organization on what they were doing and educated us on the sy- potential synergies between Ice District and Arts District and so, and I heard it from many members of council that this was a, a, a deal breaker and so we certainly through our conversations with the provinces, we were, um, getting the M O U done, uh, we took up that charge and, uh, we formed a tremendous relationship with Wind Spear. It's, uh, driving towards a potential M O U and collaboration. And, uh, it's been a real, again, benefit of this journey in a way that I think we've actually, uh, improved the deal overall.
Yeah, it did make the deal better, it'll gonna help make downtown better by having that project completed, yeah. Now, I, I appreciate, I wanna appreciate that, cause it's not just about your own organization, but you're also looking at the welfare of the entire downtown community and people who have amenities and businesses here.
This, we, we know that this deal, uh, would not be a good deal if it only benefited a limited number of people. And so I think, again, uh, along the journey, we've really, um, strove to engage as many people as possible to make this uh, something that, um, you know, will benefit many.
Good, cool, thank you, uh, so that concludes the questions to all of you, thank you so much. Uh, we have about twenty-five minutes, uh, remaining, so we're gonna go to panel number two in opposition. And I'm gonna call your names, so please, uh, identify yourself using remote, uh, uh, here in person remotely. Josephine Oginski, remote? No? Uh, Chris Sims, Canadian Taxpayers Federation, in person or remote? No? Haroon Ali, remote? No? Paul Govanlock, remote? Paul Govanlock?
Mr. Mayor, Haroon just joined the meeting.
Haroon is here, okay, got it, good. Paul Govanlock? No? Jason Rockwell? Jason Rockwell, no? Andrew Ritchie? Andrew Ritchie, no? Byron Martin, Grind, Grindstone Theater Society? No? Alexandra Izig? Alexandra Izig? Karen Fong? Please come down. Uh, Patricia Lineker?
I'm here remotely.
Thank you. David Plamondon, remote?
I'm here remote.
Thank you. Haley Bukensky? Please come down. William Day? William Day? Jocelyn Johns, Johnson? Jocelyn Johnson? No? Jerry Hobbs? Please come down. Okay, we will start with Haroon Ali, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, um, sorry, let me just pull up my speaking notes, um, yeah. So, uh, yeah, my name's Haroon, um, so in essence, kind of what I wanted to speak today was that one of the things I've really enjoyed about Edmonton is that it's, it's a working class city. It's one of the reasons that, like my parents, I've made the choice to make Edmonton my home. I'm proud to own a business, organize in the Edmonton community and enjoy myself in Edmonton. It's phenomenal city with amazing people and over the years, I've had the pleasure to knock on thousands of doors for several politicians and those running for office, whether it was myself, for MP Sohi, various N D P M L As. One of the major things that I heard on the doors over the past six years was the cost of living crisis. Things haven't gotten better for families, things haven't gotten better for working class people. They've arguably gone worse for a lot of people and so, again, working class people have contributed significantly to Edmonton's economy, but I don't think our city has, or I don't think our province has contributed to their success. If any of you are going knocking on any doors of any of the public housing complexes across Edmonton or were to explain this deal to them, would they support it? Would the struggling mother who's working two jobs to afford rent and groceries for her children agree with you? Would the recent immigrants to the city who are trying to build a life for themselves and for their families in this tough economy see it your way? Without speaking at a turn, I don't think the majority of them would think it's fair that public funds that we should be investing in working class families is heading once again into the pockets of Dalecats. And I invite the Oilers Entertainment Group or any of the councillors or Mayor Sohi that believes otherwise to go to these communities and knock on the doors and actually talk to people and have these conversations with them. There's a reason that a majority of the speakers present today were able to present today. Working class families don't have the opportunity to engage in these just dialogues because of the various things that they're doing to survive. But their voices still matter and I understand that public hearings are a preferable option for public engagement, but I don't think they cover the majority's opinion. I think to an extent they cover the opinions of those privileged enough to have the time and resources to share their thoughts. Further gentrifying the downtown community with a Las Vegas style event park that will have little benefit for Edmontonians and all the benefits for cats and the O E G is poor governance. I don't think it's fair to, for taxpayers that are struggling with, uh, increasing property taxes to be saddled with the costs of a billionaire's playground. Overall, like, I have a couple of points, but again, city council is being asked to commit to a ten-year tax diversion with only two days. Overall, like I have a couple of points, but again, city council is being asked to commit to a ten year tax diversion with only two days. I don't think that's a fair, uh, or acceptable timeline for public engagement. With four months left in your terms, this would be better sent to a public referendum. I would disagree with the earlier comments with speakers surrounding that, the, surrounding that this is a complex deal. It seems that, that some are overcomplicating this matter to prevent proper public engagement. It boils down to at the end of the day that that billionaire is benefiting from public taxpayer dollars in the middle of a housing crisis. I would rather see investments in housing support for social workers as opposed to further handouts. We don't need a Las Vegas style event park, we need compassion and understanding of the realities of Edmonton. Edmonton's a working class city that is facing massive challenges. To suggest that at this vital point, the only option is for us to invest in cats, the billionaires playground, to generate investments for downtown businesses is absurd. Rather than handing out even more money to cats, why not put that money towards investing in Edmonton made businesses? One third of the CRL funds are being directed to our private billionaires businesses, not to housing, small business supports or community infrastructure. The province is dictating how the Edmonton must spend its money, it's collected from Edmontonians and I think that's undemocratic and I think that's wrong. Earlier, I believe that councillor Principay asked a question from Rep from McEwan University of how they would justify this to university students. As a former student councillor for the U Alberta Students Union and a former student at U Alberta, I would argue that the first thing that comes to my mind isn't cats, the billionaire, it's student innovators, companies like ALOVE, run by students and for students, have far better knowledge of the realities of day to day student life and have the necessary engagement with students, far more than the Oilers Entertainment Group, just by the nature that they're students. They have faced challenges in finding housing. The most logical choice would be to turn to student entrepreneurs like Kevin and Jean who founded ALOVE that have the knowledge and trust of students, not a billionaire who quite literally sued, uh, Shelter. Even one or two percent of this OEG deal could result in real wins for students and securing housing. The reason that downtown Edmonton may be marginally be better is the direct results of the Edmonton Police Service removing the unhoused to prevent government closing safe consumption sites that saves lives and the city and OEG gentrifying the area. The reason that this is uncomfortable for some is that downtown Edmonton is the reality of politicians that have ignored the concerns of the community in favor of the wealthy. Chasing this Las Vegas dream has real world consequences for those struggling. Talking, I would honestly talk to organizations like Bearclimb Patrol or Water Warriors. And while regrettably haven't been out with Water Warriors recently, I remember seeing the dire state of the downtown community, especially around the Oilers Arena. It's just been hidden via the Edmonton Police Service effectively harassing and demonizing the unhoused and the city needs to take responsibility for their part in that. So to summarize, let's not reward a billionaire who's trying to capitalize off of public tax dollars. If cats and the Oilers Entertainment Group wanted a event park, you know who should pay for it? Probably cats and the Oilers Entertainment Group. For Edmonton to work, we need to be all able to live or.
Yes.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mayor Sohe, we are having technical issues with our.
But five minutes are up.
The five minutes.
Thank you, thank you so much, really appreciate that. Uh, our next speaker is Karen Fong. Please go ahead.
He would like to speak at the podium.
Oh, sure. Can you first turn the mic on, please?
Testing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Very much. City council should vote no to handing one hundred and thirty million dollars to the Kates group and its billionaire owner. Danielle Smith and the UCP government are selling out Edmontonians. My name is Karen Fong and I'm running to be trustee in Ward H in the upcoming municipal election. Here's the deal the premier is offering. You can have five hundred and fifty million, but only if you give one hundred and thirty million of that to a billionaire. That's not a partnership, that is blackmail. My message to Premier Smith is simple, no, you don't get to push us around. Danielle needs to stop bluffing and give Edmontonians a better deal. We, the people, are not powerless. Last year, the UCP backed down on cutting low income transit funding because Albertans hounded MLAs on the phones. Because when Albertans stand up for what's right, our government backs down. I am here today because I stand with everyday Edmontonians. The fact is, the Oilers Entertainment Group does not own this city. I've heard all the arguments in favor, the promises of vibrancy, investment and partnership. What I haven't heard is who is standing up for the working people of this city. Our provincial government has slashed healthcare, cut social services and undermined public education. How on earth can we trust them to act in Edmonton's best interest with this deal? One hundred and thirty million could build hundreds of units of housing. One hundred and thirty million could jumpstart the construction of the South Edmonton Hospital. One hundred and thirty million could be reinvested in our education system. We are already paying thirty three million dollars a year in debt from the Kates Arena deal. Every public dollar spent on the fan park is a dollar taken away from housing the homeless, operating community facilities and expanding youth social programs. That money should serve all Edmontonians, not pad the profits of a wealthy developer. I am pro equity, pro public investment and pro future of this city. Our premier says she demands better from Ottawa, but Premier Smith, Edmontonians demand better from you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, point of order, uh, just for future reference, we have a rule against, uh, using chambers or public hearings for campaigning.
Yeah, this is a statutory public hearing, so, uh, I will seek some advice from legal, but my understanding is that people during statutory public hearing, are they're free to state their views in whichever way they wish?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of today's public hearing is to hear about the CRL and it's not an appropriate forum to be engaged in campaign activities regardless of what, what the forum is, uh, that the person is running for election.
Not, it is not appropriate.
It is not appropriate.
So please, we would highly dis- encourage you, you just use city platform inappropriately to advance your political ambitions and I would stop, stop, stop. So I would encourage you to not use that as a platform, because this is abuse of a process that we are here to talk about something and you deliberately, deliberately knowingly use that process to advance your political ambitions. And I want to take, I want that on the record. So please do not do this and do not use this material for your political ambitions. So, okay, good. Uh, we will carry on with the our next speaker, which is Patricia Lineker.
Good day, everyone. I'm a concerned citizen who is strongly opposed to corporate welfare. It doesn't matter which government is making deals with private companies, whether federal, provincial or municipal. Is this OEG enterprise somehow deserving of welfare? Have the millionaire owners become destitute? If businesses make money, why do they need our tax dollars to survive? This makes no sense to me. There's all kinds of discussion about how wonderful this development will be and that might be true. However, it's expensive to the citizens by way of spending our tax dollars and there's no guarantees that it will be successful in the current economic climate. I am more concerned about the need to clean up downtown before you develop shiny new businesses. I do go downtown about once a month and what I see is a garbagey mess. In twenty eighteen, Edmonton declared the city a sanctuary for the undocumented. These unfortunate people are living on our streets all year and all over Edmonton, especially congregating in downtown. If you don't address the vagrant and homeless and addiction problems and the dittertus they strew about beforehand, downtown will never be a pleasant or safe experience for shoppers or businesses. You somehow are finding money that Edmonton doesn't have to hand out to already wealthy businesses when we obviously have many social and structural problems that need more attention. I would like to see value for my money and I don't consider this value. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will go to David Plamondon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, councillor, I'll try to keep my comments brief. Uh, I'm speaking today as somebody who was born and raised in this province and somebody who's lived in Edmonton probably for over twenty six years. I'm also speaking as a business owner, uh, and a representative of the Alberta Avenue Business Association. Um, I've had the great privilege to visit many other cities across Canada. Um, and despite, uh, the numerous things that those cities had to offer, Edmonton has always felt first and foremost like my home and, uh, always had a special place in my heart. But it's particularly disheartening that I have to continually speak to city council, um, and remind city council that there are other districts, both businesses and communities who deserve both your attention and your financial support beyond the Alberta, uh, beyond the downtown core. Um, I'll echo all of the comments that were said by other speakers today in saying that corporate welfare for billionaires is not an appropriate use of tax dollars. Um, and I think that both the city council as well as the current provincial government need constant reminders that they are elected officials who are here to serve us as citizens, whether we're Edmontonians, Albertans or Canadians. And having our tax dollars funneled into the, uh, projects like this that are only going to continue to increase the wealth gap between common Edmontonians and billionaires is not productive, not healthy for our society and it doesn't serve to address the bigger issues that we see in this city such as the homeless, um, the unhoused peoples, people suffering from substance addiction, uh, the vulnerable peoples who are continually ignored. Um, I spoke out against the bylaw previously, um, and the city continues to want to prioritize corporate welfare instead of actually serving citizens who are in great need. When we opened our business, we looked at a lot of different neighborhoods, we ultimately chose Alberta Avenue. Um, despite, or rather, not in spite of, but because of the high barriers and the negative stereotypes that work abound on Alberta Avenue. And ever since COVID nineteen, we've seen Alberta, sorry, the downtown core start to have similar stereotypes, similar negative perceptions. And while there has never been the level of support for neighborhoods like Alberta Avenue or Stony Plain that do have those, uh, negative stereotypes, there seems to be a really big push to help create a sense of safety in downtown that's never existed for our neighborhoods that do serve vulnerable populations. I'd also like to address the common theme that I've heard from those in support of this in that they are looking at this as an opportunity to donate money and to support community building. But much like the provincial government's offer of providing this funding to our city, this support is conditional to them getting money. Uh, I can say as somebody who has prioritized using both my business, my personal, uh, power and any privilege I have to building community, my community building is never conditional to any other funding or any other support. Uh, it makes me a bad business person, but it makes me somebody who is very committed and very consistent on wanting to see more community supports throughout the city. And I'd love to see organizations like OEG take a firm commitment to actually staying committed to community building. Uh, I noticed also that there was a question directly asked about the King Thunderbird, uh, and there was a very indirect answer as to whether or not that was resolved. I think it speaks to the quality of OEG that they had to sue a nonprofit organization who is actively going out of its way to try to support the vulnerable populations. Despite a positive resolution of that, they still felt it appropriate to sue over a commitment that they had made in good faith to a nonprofit that is trying to help those most vulnerable. So I would call on the city to remember that there are twelve other business improvement areas across the city that need the attention and care that you're giving to the downtown core. And I'd also remind both the city councillors here today, as well as any other elected officials in Alberta, that you serve us and that the money that you are looking to spend is our money, our tax dollars, our business taxes, our property taxes, our income taxes. And that money should be going to support every Alberta, not the rich and not the ones who have the most voice because of the wealth they have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining us. Uh, next we have Haley Bukowski?
Yeah, um, you said my name right, so thank you. Um, yeah, my name's Haley Bukowski. I, here, I'm just gonna put this up here. Um, I'm a community organizer and a board member with Climate Justice Edmonton. I live, work and organize on the streets of this ward. Um, I come to you more with an emotional plea, I don't have the big facts and numbers like a lot of the people in the suits had. But I want you to know that I fully and vehemently oppose that any funding from the CLR go towards the Kates group or G, or sorry, OEG or any new event park in the, in the private sector. Simply, I think that the city of Edmonton needs to dream bigger and fight for much more from our government, our provincial government. We do not need to accept this, we do not need to give control and empower and adjust government and economic system. You have a chance here to actually change the precedent and to show who we are as a city and what we care for. So today we're talking about community revitalization. And for that, I ask you, what does a privately run event park named after a gambling site revitalize in our community? Will this money revitalize the city of Edmonton or are we building the Ice District empire? I have seen firsthand the ousting of Boyle Street, the escalation of cops and security from our last go around of giving the private sector our money. That's why I am here, very concerned. I believe that the city, the city should not be spending money on making Edmonton, or sorry, Edmontonians' lives better for the rich, but for all of us. I do believe in giving money to our, to Edmontonians who can help build a better tomorrow. We already gave Kates and his group, the upper class and the upper class, a sweetheart deal on the arena. We are under no obligation to give them even more. Today I heard that it will be good for our economy and to that I say, this is, when I hear that, I hear this will be good for the rich. I know that me and the majority of Edmontonians won't see those profits. In fact, since the Ice District came in, my rent has almost doubled since living in this area. When I hear a commitment to housing, I ask, is that housing affordable? Is it in the public sector? I don't see that as I see a one bedroom being fifteen to two thousand dollars right now. Honestly, as a working woman with an education, I can't even afford that. So I see here, is the vision of a business empire that sues street outreach organizations worth spending any time listening to? Council seems extremely focused on one ultra man's vision and I'm sorry, I know we've talked a lot about this today. But regular Edmontonians have a vision for a downtown revitalization too, and it's one that we see often neglected. We want a downtown that is for all of us, clean, green, safe, by us, for us. We do want to see a wind spear that thrives, local markets not get shut down and green solutions, good housing. We want a downtown where renters have the protection, or the protect, protection, sorry, from heat domes, smoke waves and other climate disasters. And let me remind you of the tragic reality, our province is on fire. I have not forgotten that we are in a climate crisis. Did we not just see that last year our beloved Jasper was on fire? And I come to you as a renter, low income worker and community organizer to prioritize us in the future of this climate crisis. And let me remind you that climate change does not spare and that includes billionaires. I want a future for my children in this city, in Ward O'Damon, where they can live, breathe and dream. And from what I, I have seen in the past, leaving downtown, um, Edmonton in the hands of the most wealthy will not promise to provide the clean, green and safe future that I want for next generations. And before I go, I'll just say that we are told that the city doesn't have money to make people's lives better. We don't have the money for safe infrastructure, we don't have the money to make transit free. We don't have the money to give everyone bus service, we don't have the money to house every vulnerable person. We don't have money for dog house or for dog parks, for front yards in Bloom. And we apparently don't have the money to fund outreach teams in the libraries, switching to clean energy or retrofits. Regardless of the financial mechanism, if you find the money to give a billionaire even more after telling us again and again and again that you don't have the money, then I ask you, whose side are you really on? So my message for you councillors and Edmontonians is that we must not accept this proposal, we must, must fight for much better. We need money for our climate crisis and all that it encompasses. How much time do I have left? Thank you. Um, nothing without Edmonton, nothing without Edmonton, without Edmontonians, nothing, uh, about us without us. That means thinking bigger than leaving downtown revitalization up to private enterprise. I urge you to say no to CLR money that lines the pockets of the rich. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, our last speaker is Jerry Hopps.
Hello, um, thank you for allowing me to, um, give you some of my thoughts. Um, I am a senior and I've lived in Edmonton, uh, most of my life. Um, I have recently received my municipal tax bill from the city. My increase is forty five dollars a month and this is on top of significant raises in the last ten years. Added to the increases of my house, car and Blue Cross insurance, I'm now paying an extra twelve hundred dollars this upcoming year to cover essential items. Perhaps the individuals I'm addressing these comments to, to, do not understand how devastating these increases can be to someone who is on a fixed income. This cannot continue, the well is dry. I have reduced many things I enjoy doing because I cannot afford to do so. I should be spending these golden years, whatever that means, doing things I enjoy and should not have to worry about paying for the essentials. Obviously, some of us save but have not saved for the kind of increases that everyone seems to be applying without seemingly any sense of what this is costing people. I do not mean only economically, but also the cost to our well being. If this is not bad enough, we are now finding out that the UCP is bullying the city of Edmonton into subsidizing a billion, excuse me, a billionaire and his business adventures. This is offensive and makes me angry. What could two hundred and fifty million dollars be used for that could benefit the average person? The money could be used to address the climate crisis, reduce homelessness or lower taxes for seniors who are not well. for seniors who are not wealthy people. The event center, on the other hand, would only benefit a billionaire and a handful of businesses. Why would we pay for an event center for a billionaire when we have already paid for much of the arena? As I recall, it was a deal that the citizens could not even get a look at. The province has wasted an unacceptable amount of money on frivolous and meaningless things, but this takes the cake. The um OEG SE can and should pay for their own business ventures. The province has not paid their fair share of taxes, and now is expecting citizens to accept this deal. This is unacceptable, and the city should not accept this money. The premier made a show of giving their, the MLAs their mandates to lower energy costs, fix healthcare, reduce insurance premiums, et cetera. None of this has happened, and now they expect us to subsidize a billionaire and his business. I say absolutely not. The city of Edmonton must say no to this bribery and interference. It is my understanding that if the province paid their taxes and had not introduced the increase on education taxes, our taxes would not have gone up. And I must say, I, you know, I've been around for a long time, I had no idea that we were taking education taxes and funneling it into this kind of, um, you know, uh, business. I, I just had no idea. When you hear about what's going on in education, this, this is um offensive. Anyway, um, the province is putting the city between a rock and a hard place, subsidize a billionaire or get nothing. These tax tactics should be seen to be what they are, and if the city goes along with this, they will seem to be uh colluding with an unprincipled and intransigent government. The OEG SE should be paying for the cost of the event park. If there is no chance of amendment or a realization of a change, city council must reject this deal. It mystifies me as to why a public hearing is being held on this issue. It seems clear that we should not be considering going along with a dictatorial deal such as this one. Will someone please stand up with integrity and say no to the UCP government? And I just do wanna say just a couple of things, do I have anything, do I have any time? I, I just, I wanna say, when you were asking about engagement, I've gotta say, this whole day has been uh amazing in terms of listening to people, listening to uh the Oilers Group, listening to various sports uh programs. This is engagement, this should have happened way before we're in this situation here where we're saying now, we can't, we either accept this or it's nothing. This should have happened first, uh in my opinion. And the other question that I have is, um, the, a, a lot of these sports programs, I appreciate what they have to say, but are they, I don't know about the, how are they getting their money? Is it fifty-fifty tickets, which we're buying?
Sorry, sorry. Time is, time is, five minutes are up. Okay, we're gonna stop it here, and we're gonna carry on tomorrow morning at uh nine-thirty with questions to the panel, so please uh come back. Uh, and until then, we are on recess till nine.